Good evening, everyone. My name is Dean Shatley. I'm the attorney for the Board of Education. Tonight is a special meeting. Generally, the December meeting of the Board of Education is its organizational meeting, and after an election year, we first begin with the swearing in of new board members. I would first like to introduce Chief District Court Judge in Buncombe County, Judge Calvin Hill. Judge Hill, thank you very much for being here tonight. He's going to swear in our new and returning board members. The first board member to be sworn in will be Ms. Peggy Buchanan, and I know she also has somebody with her, I think, that she would like to introduce once she is up to the microphone.
It is my great privilege to introduce my daughter, Juliana Kendall, that will be holding the Bible for me tonight.
This is Ms. Buchanan.
I'm Ms. Buchanan. This is Ms. Kendall.
Am I swearing in, Ms. Buchanan?
Yes.
All right. Ms. Buchanan, would you place your left hand on the Bible? Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye, Margaret Grace Buchanan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
So help me God.
Help me God.
Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Margaret Grace Buchanan.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
Will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
State of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
Which are.
Which are.
Or may be established.
Or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor to support.
And I will endeavor to support.
Maintain.
Maintain.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution of said state.
The Constitution of the state.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
Those are lawyer words. They can be confusing.
[laughing]
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
So help me God.
Help me God.
Aye.
Aye, Margaret Grace Buchanan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will well and truly execute.
That I will well and truly execute.
The duties of the office.
Duties of the office.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Board of Education.
For Buncombe County.
Buncombe County.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to the best of my skill and.
Ability.
Ability.
And according to the law.
And according to the law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Can you do me a? I think you have to sign something. Next up is Ms. Amy Churchill.
I'm going to ask Madam Chair to come in.
I would be happy and honored to.
Raise your right. Go around a little bit. He probably wants to get a picture of you and not me. There you go. Come around that way a little bit.
Oh.
There you go.
Mr. Amory wants you.
All right. And now, repeat after me.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Amy Clarence Churchill.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye.
Aye, Amy Clarence Churchill.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
And to the constitutional power and authorities.
Which are.
Which are.
Or may be established.
Or may be established.
For the government thereof.
By the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor to support.
That I will endeavor to support.
Maintain.
Maintain.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution of said state.
The Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye.
Aye, Amy Clarence Churchill.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will well and truly execute.
That I will well and truly execute.
The duties of the office of the Board of Education.
The duty of the office of the Board of Education.
For Buncombe County.
For Buncombe County.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
And according to the law.
And according to the law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Next is Ms. Anne Franklin, and I know she has a special guest, too.
This is my friend Brody Austin, and he's holding my mother's Bible.
Let me know when you're ready.
I am.
Place your left hand on the Bible. Raise your right. And repeat after me, Ms. Franklin. Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Anne B. Franklin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye.
Aye, Anne B. Franklin.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
And I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
Which are.
Which are.
Or may be established.
Or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor to support.
And I will endeavor to support.
Maintain.
Maintain.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution of said state.
The Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye.
Aye, Anne B. Franklin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will well and truly execute.
That I will well and truly execute.
The duties of the office of the Board of Education.
Duties of the office of the Board of Education.
For Buncombe County.
For Buncombe County.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
And according to the law.
And according to the law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
There you go.
Ready?
Ready.
Repeat after me. Aye.
Aye, Amanda Simpkins.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye.
Aye, Amanda Simpkins.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
Which are.
Which are.
Or may be established.
Or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor to support.
And that I will endeavor to support.
Maintain.
Maintain.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution of said state.
The Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye.
Aye, Amanda Simpkins.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will well and truly execute.
That I will well and truly execute.
The duties of the office of the Board of Education.
The duties of the office of the Board of Education.
For Buncombe County.
For Buncombe County.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
And according to the law.
And according to the law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good seeing you.
Thank you, Judge.
instructed by Sergeant First Class Jeffrey Garland, United States Army Retired. We'll wait for a moment for the screen to come down.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carry gun. Right face. Forward march. You may be seated. Go ahead.
That's okay. If you also join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the election of the chair and then the election of the vice chair. We will accept nominations for the chair of the Buncombe County Board of Education. Anybody may make a nomination. So I will now open the floor. Thank you. Ms. Churchill nominates Ms. Franklin. Ms. Franklin, do you accept?
I do.
Are there any other nominations for chair? I'll close the floor. I assume there's no discussion. If anybody wants to discuss, please let me know. All those in favor of Anne Franklin as chair, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record reflect that it was unanimous. Now for the election of the vice chair. I'll open up the floor for nominations.
I would like to nominate Cindy McMahon for vice chair.
Mr. Queen has nominated Ms. McMahon. Do you accept that nomination?
I do.
Are there any other nominations? I will close the floor, saying no need for discussion. All in favor of Ms. McMahon as vice chair of the Board of Education, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Please let the record show that Ms. McMahon has voted unanimously as vice chair of the Buncombe County Board of Education. Congratulations, Ms. Franklin and Ms. McMahon. I'll now turn the meeting over to you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order, and I need to get an approval of the agenda. Thank you. And a second. All those in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now time for public comment.
Madam Chair, we have five public comments tonight. Please state your name and where you're from, and then you'll have three minutes.
Yes. So my name is Tiffany Aceto, and I'm a parent of a second grader and eighth grader at the Owen District. I am also a nurse that has worked late hours every day during this pandemic, so just hear me out. I don't take the pandemic lightly, and I would have been here months ago to advocate for my children, but I was working. I just want to kind of give you guys an overview of how the school year has gone for my children. To be blunt, it's been a disaster in ways and then a blessing in ways. To start off with second grade, you know, my second grader is a very advanced student. He scored third grade level and fourth grade level on all of his beginning of year testing, which is amazing considering that they basically didn't do anything much in the spring. He is eager to learn. He begs every day and cries every day, and he is not an emotional child to go back to school. He has begged us to send him to private school so he can go every day, but financially, that is not an option for our family. So currently, his plan, he's in school eight days, so he's in school Mondays and Tuesdays. His three days at home, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, consist of one Zoom that lasts 30 minutes on Wednesday mornings. So basically, for three days, he does not see his teacher at all. YouTube is banned from our house, from our children, yet majority of their lessons are YouTube videos instead of uploaded videos from the teachers. To me, that's very disturbing because I know we banned it because of the way that our children's attitudes changed when they were watching YouTube videos. To me, it's just not acceptable for him to not have a teacher even the three days that he's at home, at least on seesaw videos or anything like that. You know, another issue is my middle schooler. When they were all virtual from August until they started back in person, she had 13 Zooms canceled by teachers. We contacted the principal when the seventh Zoom was canceled, and yet they continued to go on. This was ELA. This was math. This was science and social studies, not elective courses. These were main courses. My daughter in eighth grade has an IEP. She needs to be in person five days a week, which I know, per the governor, we cannot do right now, but it is devastating to her to not have the teacher show up, especially during that time when they had a 90-minute planning period at the end of each day, and their excuses for canceling was because they had mandatory paperwork or would not be in the school building that day. Just yesterday, I got an email along with other students and parents from her social grades teacher saying that several students in their class have a zero average for this nine weeks or single digit. Thank you.
Please state your name and where you're from.
My name is Shanna Peel. I'm a teacher at Woodson Elementary. Good evening. I would like to thank the board for all of their diligence and hard work. This has not been an easy year, and I do not envy your position. I appreciate the thoughtfulness, research, and compassion that goes into your decisions. I'm a special education teacher. I love my job and my students. Remote learning was hard, but I was finding my way through it, adapting and learning new ways to teach with the same integrity as in-person teaching, just as educators are doing all over the world right now. It breaks my heart to say that I was forced to choose between the profession that I am passionate about and my health and that of my family. You see, I am high-risk due to underlying medical conditions. I also frequently take care of my older parents, including my mom, who is on her sixth chemo treatment. I cannot risk exposure to the virus and leave my three children without a mother or carry it to my mother, who has no immune system. My ADA accommodation request to continue to work remotely, even for just my students who have opted into remote-only learning, which is over half of my caseload, was denied. So unfortunately, unfortunately for me and my students, I'm on leave without pay for the rest of this school year. I want to be back in the classroom when it is safe to do so. Let me say that again. I want to be back in the classroom when it is safe to do so. I can genuinely say those words, as can most educators across the country. We all know the value of in-person learning. What is important is that our leaders, you, the board, are able to continue to make decisions using data about our community and information that is current and relevant about COVID-19. There is an abundance of information about COVID out there. All of the best and brightest are working hard to research and analyze the data every day. While hopes of a vaccine are just on the horizon, a reminder that distribution will not be widespread until 2022 or '23 is prudent. Per vaccine research analysis by ABC Science Collaborative, a scientific community developed in response to COVID and its impact on schooling, the vaccines currently in the process of FDA approval have a 90% effectiveness rate for severe disease. This effectiveness is associated with nasty cases of COVID, but not 100% effective at transmission. That means that our high-risk populations are still at risk in the long term. With these data and despite pandemic fatigue, it is imperative that we do not decrease our adherence to the three W's: wear, wait, and wash by moving to Plan A. 100% mask compliance outside of possibly the adaptive curriculum, six feet or more of social distancing at all times, and good hand hygiene are critical. Community transmission in Buncombe County is at 4.9% today and trending upward. We must remain diligent to protect our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, please state your name and where you're from.
My name is Paula Denga, and I'm a teacher here in Buncombe County, and I'm also the president of Buncombe County Association of Educators. Madam Chair, Dr. Baldwin, respected board members, thank you for having me tonight, and I appreciate your service and for the very difficult work you have ahead. Tonight, you'll no doubt consider plans to return to school in January 2021 following a two-week winter break. I'm here on behalf of the Buncombe County Association of Educators and many of our colleagues to urge that you consider return to learn that will protect the health and safety of our thousands of students, staff, and families. Esse kwambidere, to be rather than to seem. That's the state motto of North Carolina, and it bears significance in our situation in schools in this time of pandemic. Our community and our state are in the midst of a marked surge in COVID-19 cases, and we have yet to see the real effects of a Thanksgiving holiday weekend where many among us have traveled and gathered to celebrate. Our community is currently at 4.6% positivity rate and climbing, and reports are that Mission Hospital is nearing capacity on its COVID floors, nearly doubling its hospitalizations since last week. Our own BCS dashboard reflects 30 new cases within our schools, plus the 26 from last week, and untold numbers yet to be reported, recorded, or discovered. We appreciate the increased transparency because more information is better than no information. Esse kwambidere. Students, teachers, and staff are getting sick, and many potentially have life-altering conditions, presuming they recover. Families who practice strict protocols are sending their children to school to sit and work and play near others who are less dedicated to healthy practices. We are losing CNAs in January and have already eliminated HSSAs who are first-line defense to monitoring symptoms before they get to the classroom. Now we are relying on an attestation, a piece of paper, that even our families and staff members must be trusted to be honest and vigilant, and we know, pardon me, I have a little tickle in my throat, we know that they're not always vigilant or completely forthcoming. One recent survey of BCF staff members reveals that the confidence level for keeping children and each other safe is dangerously low. Our survey reveals record levels of stress for trying to accomplish the near impossible. Why is that significant? Because we need these staff members to sustain their efforts, yet we...
Thank you.
Hello. Please state your name and where you're from, and then you will have three minutes.
My name is Kristy Corr, and I'm a third-grade teacher at STS Elementary. Thank you all for letting me be here tonight. I would like to speak about two things: staff morale and mental health. These two things right now are at an all-time low, and it's really hard to keep our spirits up when we have more than ever on our shoulders. Our main goals right now are, one, to keep our kids safe; number two, to teach them as much as we possibly can in person; and number three, to help them continue with their schoolwork at home. On top of that, we're still expected to do testing as normal, attend PDs as normal, and even more than before; be observed as normal; keep up with the pacing guide as normal, even in this abnormal year. We are trying to be the best we can for our students, but we're running low on energy and morale. And we now know that we need the help of our board and our county office. Some things we are in need of is, one, to feel safe in our school buildings. We need to have a plan that helps us know that we will not be put in an unsafe situation like Plan A. We are suspended in a world of unknown. We need reassurance, and we need respect. We need to be treated as professionals. We appreciate and desperately need Wednesdays to clean and provide feedback for our students and to rewrite our whole curriculum to make it useful and beneficial for the students. We are working overtime to do what is best for our students, and any less restrictive shift to the current four-day plan would put more stress on the staff. Another way to increase morale is to implement virtual learning days on winter weather days, where it is not safe to travel into school. By doing this, like dozens of counties in the state already have, it will keep us on track, it will make sure our kids are learning, even if they can't come in. And teachers should also be able to work from home in this situation. We deserve to be safe, just like the kids, and that would be a really easy way to show you trust and appreciate your staff. Finally, please consider implementing at least a two-week quarantine period after virtual learning, after Christmas break. After seeing the surge of cases and quarantines after Thanksgiving, this is seriously needed after a longer break with more opportunities to travel. We do not want to create a super-spreader environment, especially with more students coming back into the building. Thank you for considering helping build the morale of our schools in such a trying time.
Thank you.
Hello.
You know the drill.
Yeah. My name is Alyssa Pedersen. I am an elementary school art teacher in Irwin County District. I'm at two different schools, I'm at Woodfin and Lester Elementary School. I love to teach. I'm a teacher. I've been born a teacher, didn't know it until I became a teacher, but I'm a teacher. My kids call me Miss Alyssa, and I was lucky enough to be honored to be the Irwin District Teacher of the Year in 2019. So I'm here because, first, I want to thank you for supporting the arts in Buncombe County Schools. We're known for our solid art program. We're known for allowing our kids to know that the world is full of possibilities, and they can understand that through the arts, music, theater, PE, all these good things. So thank you for that. But I'm here because there's confusion amongst teachers. I had a PLC with my other art teachers and music teachers on Wednesday, and people are like, are they going to take away our Wednesdays? Are they going to put us on Plan B? Nobody knows. We don't know the metrics, and maybe that's a lack of communication, but we're not sure. So we want to have more transparency on what, how are we moving forward, and what are the metrics, what are the reasoning? I want to give you a small snapshot. I teach in a normal pre-COVID year, over 500 kids in a week. In these times, it's about 450, and if you break it down into thirds, I see 150 kids in person, in class, every week. I have 300 online during that time. When I'm online, I see them in seesaw, I see them in Google Classroom. I make YouTube videos, and they are kid-friendly, but I do that so I can edit them. You can go on my YouTube channel, I got a really nice one, and I do really nice lessons. But I have them, and then I give feedback. I give real valuable, strong feedback to my kids. I see what they do, I notice what they have, and I say, hey, kids, I see this, I see you, I see what you're doing. I have to have time after school to do that, I have to have Wednesdays to do that. And I'm also saying it because schedules are tricky. If you change us to A and then we go back to B, it's tricky when we have all these little moving parts, and I don't call myself or my program little, but I am part of a larger cohort of things going on. Again, I'm at two schools, so I interact with a lot of different kids. I use my time in between to clean, I do deep cleaning in between after-school, and the silver lining, I can think about what my kids just did, and then I can move forward with what my kids are about to do during my classes. Just want to say, there's no winners here. We're not going to teachers' needs versus the family needs. I heard the pain of that parent before, I get it. It's us against COVID. It's not us against each other. And so we need to stay safe. So I'm advocating for staying on Plan B for a while, don't go to Plan A. It's going to be so tricky, let's see what happens with this post-holiday surge, let's see what happens with, you know, if community spread goes above 5%. We don't want people to get hurt.
That's all my time. Thank you for listening. Thank you. I believe that's our last public comment. Thank you. I need to clear up something that I forgot to do, and I'd like to welcome Amanda Simpkins to our board. She was sworn in with the rest of us tonight, and we welcome her. She's an at-large representative, and we look forward to working with her. Thank you. All right. Are you telling me something special? Okay, then it's time for so-called independent comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to begin by recognizing Leigh Anne Smith. She is one of our outstanding media specialists. She's at Glen Arden Elementary School. And Leigh Anne has been selected to participate as a fellow within the World Council on Intercultural and Global Competence. Leigh Anne has been such a role model in our district as a leader in the Global Education Initiative. If you recall, that was one of the four key initiatives that we put in place almost five years ago. She is also one of the first BCS staff to receive her NC Global Education Digital Badge. So just want to recognize Leigh Anne in cyberspace. While we continue to operate schools under the cloud of COVID, we can't forget that senior students across our entire district are in the midst of planning for college and post-graduation opportunities that lie ahead. I'm pleased to announce that Nesbit Discovery Academy ranks 10th in the state for the percent of seniors completing their FACFA forms, that's Free Application for Federal Student Aid. And a big thank you to Susan Gavennes from our Student Services Department for her leadership in this effort across the entire district. Increasing the state-ride rate of applications is an important part of an organization called My Future NC, and they have a very lofty goal to ensure that by 2030, 2 million North Carolinians will have a high-quality credential or post-secondary degree. Good news on the school bus front. In early November, the Buncombe County Schools Transportation Department had its annual DPI transportation inspection. Our school buses were graded on safety, equipment, mechanical issues, cleanliness, and efficiency. The overall score received from the inspection was the best in the past five years, and it will project out to be one of the very best scores in the state. So I want to congratulate and thank David Roney, our Director of Transportation, and his entire team for such good work in keeping our student transportation safe. The North Carolina Symphony, we just heard about the arts, that has created a new program called Adopt a School that assigns professional musicians to work directly with teachers at our schools to schedule engaging and educational virtual visits. The activities can range from instrument introductions for elementary school students to sectionals for middle, high school string or brass players. Only 38 school systems were selected in the state for this opportunity, and so congratulations to STS, to Candler, Valley Springs, TC Robertson, and INCA Intermediate, Middle, and High for being selected in this inaugural Adopt a School program, and we're so proud of our arts. Thank you again for sharing information about the, and let's see, I'm just going to duplicate that, I don't think I need to. We have really congratulated and recognized the arts. In closing, I want to remind everyone that December 14th through December 18th, and that is coming up around the corner, that our high schools will be administering required exams in the areas of career tech education and North Carolina End-of-Course Assessment. While we've been able to provide virtual exam models to our high school students for a pretty large number of their courses, this state has not allowed or developed those for the four courses of Biology, English II, Math I, and Math III, and thus will require face-to-face administrations. I want to acknowledge the work of our administrators at the high schools and here in the district office for all their efforts to plan and coordinate, because that's quite a challenge. That concludes my comments. Madam Chair.
Thank you. At this time, we will move to the Good News section on the agenda, and I will ask Ms. Harris to lead us on.
Good evening, everyone. Madam Chair, Dr. Baldwin, members of the board. So for our good news item tonight, we'd like to have Ms. Martha Simmons come to the podium. She's an occupational therapist with BCS, and tonight with her is Janet Sputzer. Janet worked for us for over 40 years and recently retired, and we have a special recognition for her tonight.
Since 1963, North Carolina governors have reserved their highest honor, the Order of the Longleaf Pine Award, for individuals who have made significant contributions to the state through their exemplary service and exceptional accomplishment. It is on behalf of Governor Cooper, it is my honor to announce that Janet Sputzer is the recipient of this award. Janet served the special needs population of Buncombe County Schools for over 40 years. In addition to directly serving students, she served as the Assistant Technology Team and Lead of the Occupational Therapy Department. On behalf of the Occupational Therapists of Buncombe County Schools, therapists across the state, and the children you have served, congratulations on this honor. And we will hear from a recorded message from Bridgette LaCombe from North Carolina Department of Public Instruction Occupational Therapy Representative.
Hi, everyone. My name is Bridgette LaCombe. I am the Consultant for Occupational Therapy to the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. I am also a former occupational therapist here in Buncombe County Schools. I am truly honored to be here to extend my gratitude and congratulations to Janet Sputzer for her 40-plus years of service as an occupational therapist to the state of North Carolina. I know Janet on a personal level, as she mentored me when I was a new graduate here in Buncombe County. She helped shape my own practice by challenging me, guiding me in best practice, and supporting me as both a colleague and a friend. I will forever be grateful to Janet for sharing her wealth of knowledge, her time and energy, and her passion with me. This is one small glimpse into a lifetime of influence she has had on the people she has worked alongside and the students and families she has supported. If you know Janet, you know that she is incredibly dedicated, hardworking, and passionate. She has been a strong advocate for the profession of OT, her colleagues, students, and families. Janet has worked with students of all ages with a variety of strengths and needs across every district in Buncombe County Schools at one time or another. She's guided the OT department through her role as a leader team, and served on both the Assistant Technology and the Transdisciplinary Play-Based Assessment Teams. This is yet another small glimpse into her extensive accomplishments throughout her career. Janet exemplifies what it means to be an educator, a leader, a team player, and a student-centered holistic educational therapist. Thank you, Janet, for sharing your strength, your wealth, your knowledge, and your dedication to inspire us and to leave us a formidable legacy of service to the profession of OT, the state of North Carolina, and Buncombe County Schools. Congratulations on the very well-deserved award.
This is such an honor, and thank you so much. It's a privilege to have worked for Buncombe County Schools for this long. I loved my job. I loved working with my children. It was hard going out during COVID when I wasn't able to really have a proper closure, but it's, this is such an honor. Thank you so much.
I mean, it's all good news, but I mean, my part is over.
I'd like to ask Churchill to come up and stand on the X, please. Would you please come stand on the X? Do you find the X? I'd like to say that it's a pleasure to work with Amy Churchill, and she has done an amazing job here in Buncombe County, but the state has also realized that Ms. Churchill has leadership abilities, and they have elected her to be President of the State Board of, I started to say State Board of Education, would that not be fun? The State School Boards Association. So tonight, Dr. Baldwin has some flowers to give to Amy as we recognize her for her willingness to represent the entire state at our State School Boards Association. And thank you, Ms. Churchill. Would that not be fun? The State School Boards Association. So tonight, Dr. Baldwin has some flowers to give to Amy as we recognize her for her willingness to represent the entire state at our State School Boards Association. And thank you, Ms. Churchill. Okay, now it's time for our action agenda. At this time, the first item is 2020-2021 Budget Amendment Number Two. Are there questions from the board for Ms. Frisbee?
Madam Chair, I have one, but it's not about, it's a quick question about where we are in the budget, but it's not about Budget Amendment Two. Would you prefer me to wait, or could I ask it now?
I think it's appropriate for you to go ahead. She's walking up now.
Thank you. Ms. Frisbee, as you're approaching, I'm just curious as to where we are today compared with a year ago at approximately this time, doesn't have to be the exact day, in terms of our transportation budget? What we, what we spent in 2019, pre-COVID, first of the year to about this point versus where we are today?
Okay, I have that information. So as of November 30th, 2019, we had spent $2,473,390. That was 39.72% of the budget. For 11/30/2020, we have spent $2,179,773, and that's 35.42% of the budget. This lady's staring at me.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Sorry. I was going to say it's $293,000 less.
Thank you.
Yes. Other questions from the board about this item? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you. Could I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item on the agenda is School Improvement Plans. That's Ms. Swanger. Are there questions for Ms. Swanger from the board?
I do have a question.
All right. I will remind the public as well as board members that these school improvement plans are now on our website, and you can read them at your leisure. And then I encourage you to do so.
Yes, ma'am.
First of all, thank you to all of the school staff and so many people involved in creating these school improvement plans. And it was so much better than it used to be when I used to have to come into the office and take the notebook down off the shelf, and now to be able to read all of them in the comfort of my own home, I very much appreciate it. So thank you. One thing I was curious about as I was reading through the school improvement plans from the Reynolds District was the extent to which we have asked schools to consider this new day that we're in as they're revisiting their plans. I saw occasional mentions of COVID, but I mean, it's an entirely new day. We're doing instruction all differently. Everything is so different. Our expectations are necessarily different of students. And I'm just wondering about the extent to which that is being discussed in terms of the school improvement plans, so that we're not just pretending that it's a normal year when it's not.
It's certainly not normal, is it? We're really excited that we can use this digital platform to focus our intentional goals and indicators. So having identifying three indicators that we work on allows us to work at our own pace and stagger when those goals are completed. That plan works alongside of a digital technology plan that really talks about the COVID ways that we are now teaching based on the professional development that we've done, based on how classroom instruction is delivered. So those plans really work hand in hand, and principals knew that they only had three selections that they were currently working on. So that one is embedded in the work of our multi-tiered systems of support, of our attendance work, of our grading work, and our continuous improvement. But we've really tried to whole-fast that the continuous improvement is for the high-impact academic strategies. And then when we talk and teach those strategies, what does it look like with students who are face-to-face? What does it look like with students who are remote?
Okay.
Does that answer your question a little?
A little. I mean, I still am concerned that we might be holding schools to standards that are from a normal year when everything is not normal and we're all doing the best we can. But are, are we, are we holding ourselves, our schools, our teachers, our administrators to standards that are not relevant currently?
Well, we're holding our schools to the standards of which the state has held us to. So there is no forgiveness of any standard. What we are trying to do is identify what are those most powerful practices that will help students both in front of us and remotely. And we ask schools to choose Indicator 8.204 because that allows them to look at the work that COVID has cost us to do differently. So probably that's the way we best intermingle that work.
Thank you.
Other questions from board members? All right. Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the school improvement plans.
Thank you. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The next item on the agenda is ESTEES Elementary School Three Classroom Edition Project. Authorized Design Team and C-MAR to proceed. That would be Mr. Fairley. Are there questions for Mr. Fairley from the board? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you. Could I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item is Hawcrake Elementary School Additions and Renovations Phase One Procurement of Furnishings. That's also Mr. Fairley. Are there questions for Mr. Fairley?
I have questions, Madam Chair.
Okay. Mr. Fairley, will you come in, please?
So I gave you a heads up about this a little bit earlier, but as I looked through the proposal, of course, there was the long, long list of all the different furnishings for Hawcrake, which looked great. And then we get to the end, and there's the drawing of how these are going to be laid out in the classroom. And I looked at that, having spent a considerable amount of time in classrooms recently, and thought, well, this is not going to work during COVID. Hopefully, these furnishings are for once COVID is over. But I'm curious to know how flexible these furnishings are should we find ourselves, God forbid, in another pandemic. Are these furnishings that would lend themselves to spreading children apart?
These furnishings were designed for collaborative learning, which is the trend we've been working towards, and not for COVID. The good side of collaborative learning is that the furniture is very mobile. It moves around. It can be reconfigured in different ways. So yes, you can spread the furniture out, but by no means would this furniture or this size classroom with any type of furniture accommodate a full class load with six feet of separation, even if we went to the kind of lecture-style individual student chairs and desks that we used to do 10 years ago.
And that we have in some of the Hawcrake classrooms now.
That, that's right. They're still around, but when we do a new school or a major renovation, we move towards this collaborative learning. And again, it's a combination of tables, chairs, and individual desks, soft seating and such. So you can't, and they're all mobile. There's, most things are on casters, and we expect teachers to reconfigure their rooms multiple times a day. That's what they do. So I would respond to that, that yes, it has some flexibility. It could accommodate kind of the AB-sized classes that we have now, but it could not accommodate, and the classroom sizes, could not accommodate a full class with six feet of separation.
Hawcrake classrooms are small. And so, yeah, I was interested more in the AB situation that we're in now. Would we be able to use this kind of furniture to separate kids sufficiently? It sounds like we would.
I believe so, yes.
Thank you. That answers my question.
Other questions for Mr. Fairley? I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The next item on the agenda is North Buncombe Middle School Use of Capital Outlay Athletic Allotment. This is Tiffany McCants and a school representative, and I don't see one.
Oh, we have one?
We do have one.
Hi. Come in. This is Tiffany McCants and Ms. Johnson. Thank you. I used to teach her, and she had a different name then. Sorry. So do we have questions for these two experts that have just entered the room?
I have a question for Board Attorney, just to make sure that, I think I know the answer because we've had this occur periodically, but for the public, this was not the low bid by a couple hundred dollars. So the recommendation is that the second highest bidder be selected for some legitimate reasoning, and we are okay to do that as a board, correct?
At this amount, you are. At this amount level. If it was over $30,000, we'd have to give the lowest bidder. But at this point in time, it is outside the formal bid process or informal bid process even, too.
Thank you.
Questions for board members?
I just had one other thing. The, just in terms of a clerical thing, Madam Chair, the, in the memo to Dr. Baldwin, one, two, three, the fourth paragraph probably should be changed.
Yes, there was a typo on that that I recognized actually when I was sitting out there. So yes, it is specifically supposed to be for the seven wrestling mats, not for that one little snippet that's at the end of that fourth paragraph.
In relation to Kane Creek?
Correct. That is correct.
So I would entertain. Do other board members have questions? I would entertain a motion to approve this with that editorial change.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson. Dr. Johnson. Yes. At this time, the item is Return to Learn Plans and a setup for board discussion. And I believe Dr. Baldwin's going to lead us with that.
Afternoon, everyone. I'm going to ask our leadership team that's represented just to be on standby because we want to be available in case there's questions. But I want to begin by recognizing and making sure that the public is aware that we had two highly productive and informative meetings that took place this week with our board and our local public health officials. As current and future decisions continue to be made for operating our schools under the umbrella and effect of COVID, seeking out and receiving local COVID data and hearing from Stacy Saunders and her team is, in my opinion, incredibly important. While we received information that in Buncombe County, our percentage positivity rate from COVID testing was at 4.6%, and that was, again, about 48 hours ago, that compared to the average rate of 9.5% for the state, we were also made aware of the rise in these rates over the past several weeks, and of course, the probability of future rise as a result of holiday travel and gathering impacts. I personally found the information regarding the upcoming vaccines and projected phasing of the vaccination process to be of interest. Likewise, I'm very excited about the pilot COVID testing program that could be available within our schools possibly as early as January. But ultimately, all of these discussions culminated in the extreme importance for all of us without fail to continue to practice the three Ws. Wash your hands, wait for spacing, and wear your mask at all times. Prior to a discussion regarding our return to learn on January 4th after the holiday break, I thought it might be helpful just to review the process. The current statewide decision that is in effect by Governor Cooper stipulates that grades K through five may be operated in Plan A while grades six through 12 may operate within the guidelines of Plan B. You, the board, have been given the option to operate as noted or to operate the schools within a plan that is more but not less restrictive. For example, grades K through five can operate under Plan B as we currently are doing, or Plan C, which is a remote-only model. Our recommendation from the district leadership, and we're calling this Phase One, is for all schools K-12 to remain in Plan B with a return to regular school hours for a minimum of four weeks beginning January 4th. Now let me explain that decision from our end. This would allow adjustment time to incorporate approximately 1,900 students that through our survey have requested to move from remote-only to in-person instruction. It would also provide a reasonable time span to allow for negative COVID-19 impact that may come to us from our two-week holiday break. And again, as we know, the impact of COVID is all about timing. And because of the incubation period, we may not see that impact until we actually go through a sequence of weeks. That's the nature of COVID. A second recommendation that we want to go ahead and make is that when considering any future shift to Plan A that affects kindergarten through fifth graders, that we limit the transition to our kindergarten through fourth grade or existing combination, fourth, fifth grade classrooms. And we do have just a handful of those across the district. The reasoning is based on maintaining consistency. We're a large school system. We have six individual school districts, so as consistent as we can be across the county, our opinion is it's the better way. We have the intermediate school structure of grades five and six in four of our six districts. Beyond the challenge of operating two groups of students on different plans inside the same building, there exists a significant concern regarding shared bus transportation. That's very specific to the intermediate schools. And I think if there's some specific data, information, Mr. Huff has collected some from our intermediate schools, so that would be available to you. But we, again, we have to remember that as the fifth grade ridership would increase in those schools, theoretically, we're still operating the bus transportation under the most rigid capacity numbers because they still remain in effect. In other words, Plan A, from a standpoint of bus transportation, does allow some flexibility. It moves from required to recommended. If there's a combination of A and B, students on that bus, we have to follow the Plan B restrictions, which are requirements in terms of capacity on those buses. Along with the Phase One recommendation, several options we have listed under a Phase Two transition, and that would increase in-person instruction for our students. Each of these options were identified at some point in the board's earlier discussions. These options are, number one, all K-4 schools operate under Plan A, five days weekly. These options are, number one, all K-4 schools operate under Plan A, five days weekly. Number two, all K-4 schools operate under Plan B, but adding an alternate Wednesday. So here's what that might look like. Under Week One, Group A attends Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Group B attends Thursday, Friday. Week Two, Group B would attend, excuse me, Group A would attend Monday, Tuesday, and Group B would attend Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. So there's a pickup over a two-week span of additional instructional day for each student. Number three, all grades five through thirteen schools would operate under Plan B, adding alternate Wednesdays in similar fashion to what I just explained. Now needless to say, our goal is certainly to bring all of our students back into the school building. I don't think I've talked to an educator that doesn't agree with that. The challenge in COVID land is how and when and to what extent to bring them back while we maintain, first and foremost, the health and safety of not only our students, but our teachers and staff. We believe an initial four-week period of monitoring and planning will be crucial to addressing those priorities. As you consider these options under a second phase, we will be glad to help address any questions that you may have to the best of our ability. And finally, I feel like a broken record because I think anytime I stood in front of a group and talked about COVID in any form or fashion, most of the time I lead off with this. I think it's so important to remind all of us about the single constant factor in COVID land, and that's been since March. And that is change in capital letters. Any decision that's made is subject to that change based on the effects, and especially for us, relative to Buncombe and the impact of this pandemic for those of us that live in Buncombe County. So with that, I'm going to, again, ask members of our staff, leadership staff, to be available. And I hope, again, this provides at least a base or a foundation to start this discussion. Again, we will be here as a resource to help answer any specific questions. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir. So...
Could I, could I ask Dr. Baldwin just a couple of clarifying questions? Just to make sure I'm clear. The, extending to the, well, first, let me say thanks for the information and for putting the things together with the Health Department. Those have been very valuable, I know, not just to me, but to all of us. It is, I think it's important that the public understands that we have a responsibility as a board to make a decision of some kind today, to be fair to our parents and our families and our teachers and all of us. It, it will appear as if it doesn't match up with what's going on in the news today with cases, et cetera. But we can't wait for a January 4th start for our next meeting, January 14th, and a two-week holiday. So we've got to try to come to some type of decision today. My question is, in extending the day to their normal class day, is there any reason, or would there be any problem from your perspective, if this board wanted to begin that starting next week, whether it be Monday or Tuesday or Wednesday or Thursday, whatever, from a logistics standpoint, we could put that in place in our schools? And I ask that question thinking about exams coming up, an extra hour of kids on, in the school on those days that might be helpful towards that, or would that be problematic from the school system perspective?
I think that they are across the board because, again, our testing is focused at the high school level. I see an advantage to that. I also believe, wholeheartedly, in the initial part of communicating that question, and that is the importance of the timing, making people aware, giving them time. My feeling is, and I'm going to ask the leadership staff to step in as well, I think in terms of communicating that out to our schools to take care of the bell system, to make sure that parents make the adjustment, I think that might be a better fit if we were able to put that in the last week, which is the actual testing week. I think it gives our schools time to adapt to that. I believe if this board is, believes that that additional instructional time that would be provided with that extra hour, if that is indeed something that they're considering to begin as we recommended on January 4th, I think there's also an advantage to transition and allowing us to complete this semester on that type schedule and then just carrying that through as we begin on January 4th. I would ask if any, anyone has some alternative thought or from the team back there?
And then my second question, Madam Chair, and then I'll stop, is in comparison, in terms of K-4, K-5, we have four intermediate schools, correct?
Correct.
So if we went K-5, we would have four intermediate schools that we would have a portion of. If at some point, whether it's January 4th or February 1st or April, whenever, if we were in a, an A schedule for K-5 or K-4, we would have four schools that would be being different. How many elementary schools would we have if we go K-4 only that those fifth graders would still be on an AB schedule, like the sixth graders would be in the intermediate school?
We'll probably need some help with that from our elementary school guru.
Or in my district, that would be the Owen District School.
Owen and Reynolds. So it would be...
Four in Reynolds.
At least three in the Owen that I can think of off the top of my head. Seven? So those, there would be seven schools that would be impacted in a way that is, you would have that one grade level that's operating in a different manner than the K through four.
Seventy percent of our fifth graders in Buncombe County schools attend the intermediate school. If you say that into the microphone, please.
Seventy percent of our students who are fifth graders attend the intermediate school.
Can I, can I just ask, because it sounded like, based on what you were saying earlier, the biggest issue with, if, if, if and when we ever go to Plan A, the biggest issue with going ahead and sending the fifth graders back now is the logistics of the busing situation because they're still having to ride the buses with the sixth graders, which means on said buses, unless we're busing our fifth graders and sixth graders at that intermediate school separately, we're having to maintain six feet distance at all times on that bus, which makes those numbers logistically maybe impossible. Am I right?
That is, I think that's...
Yes.
That is a fair summation. Mr. Huff has collected some numbers that might be of interest.
And I can hand you this. The biggest thing, as we've seen, and I will say the busing, it's encouraging as we've seen the numbers rise, that the parents do feel comfortable since we first started in August. I would tell you, we were very surprised. We were really concerned when we first started off how big those numbers were. But I would tell you, the AM run and the PM run, we were seeing numbers like four in the morning, eight in the afternoon. Let me give you an idea. I just pulled a couple of schools, and David Roney is currently working on actually assessing all those schools' time now in comparison. If I had to give you a quick average, we're looking at anywhere eleven, twelve, fifteen in the mornings across the board on all. And then when we're looking in the afternoon, this is the most important number. Those buses are right there. Some of them are eighteen. But here's the biggest piece, and I just basically pulled two, two intermediate schools, in which case we're showing twenty-two on two or three of the buses, and on one bus in particular, twenty-four. Now let me remind you of that one per seat, what that number was that we can't go over. And that number is twenty-two and twenty-four. And the reason why you get two numbers there is some of our buses are just a little bit longer than others. So we're already right there. We won't...
On Plan B.
I'm sorry?
On Plan B, we're already right there.
Correct, correct. And then, of course, that factors into your discussion with five, six and intermediate. You're already there in a lot of cases in the afternoon. So as you plan for more, and then, and I still go back, you still keep in mind, they say highly recommended in Plan A. So, you know, as much as we would like to try to keep that as more students are coming back in, we know those numbers are going to go beyond this. So we are talking second and third loads in a lot of our schools. And like I said, I just had David Roney just do me a quick, two schools that are intermediate. He is actually building a bigger document. I've looked at it briefly. He has not completed it. But those numbers are reflected to the other schools as well. So we're already seeing in, under Plan B, that we are at that twenty-two and twenty-four capacity. So as we look to a Plan A, we know that that's going to, you know, multiply. And not to mention that of those that are coming in for remote, if that trend continues, that they're feeling comfortable, we are going to be looking at second load buses. And that plays into a little bit. It's more concerning in the morning because you're constricted on time with second loads. You might have to be up a little bit earlier and then wanting to make sure we don't miss any time because the buses will be getting there late. So it's a little more concerning, but with supervision in the afternoon for the teachers that have to be out there when they have to monitor for second loads, hopefully we never get into a third load situation. So there is some concern in the afternoons as well that once you get to those second loads, it causes supervision issues.
Just curious, our earliest pickup time in the morning is 6:15?
The bulk of our buses, about 6:15, 6:30.
That's early.
It is.
As a follow-up to Ms. Simkins and to what I think I understand the rule is, if you've got students who are in the B plan on a bus, you must treat that bus as if all students are in the B plan. Is that correct? So are we not going to have the same issue in those seven elementary schools? With those fifth grader, once you, once you put a fifth grader on a bus, then all students on that bus, K through four, must be treated as B students, correct? Which, which goes back to your...
We would want to, under the highly recommended, when you consider a Plan A, we still, and keep in mind, too, when you look at the K through three, I think it is with elementary, remember, they can sit three to a seat. So as you would consider, you know, to setting two to a seat, you're still under that capacity that's usually considered. So we would still try our best to maintain that highly recommended to the best of our ability. And keep in mind, we still do the siblings. Siblings can sit with each other. That's been practiced ever since the start. And one other thing I would mention, when you're considering that intermediate, remember, those buses go to that entire district. So if you're considering a second load that's, you know, tougher in the mornings, keep in mind, when you're doing that in an elementary district and you're trying to do that one per seat, it's a little easier because you're much more confined in that elementary district versus the intermediate that serves, that those buses serve the entire district.
With all due respect, I don't think there's any place we can have three to a seat in either the required or the recommended.
Oh, we wouldn't want to, no.
Okay. Mr. Shatley?
I'm, I'm making sure of this, but I wasn't sure if the delineation was Plan A or Plan B or whether it was just actually fifth and sixth grade. So it was sixth graders through twelfth graders have to follow the Plan B bus, which would mean that for those elementary schools that also have fifth grade within them, that those fifth graders could still ride a bus, or the bus could still have the Plan A social distancing measures and not the Plan, Plan B.
It's just when you make the combination of grade five and six with intermediate, and that, that's the bus that would, would require us to follow the stricter restrictions on those buses.
Required.
Did that answer your question, Mr.?
Yeah, but you're still going to run into, when you add more students in those elementary schools, you're still going to run into capacity issues on those buses when you go from...
Because of the restrictions.
A split of theoretically sixty percent. I know that's not equal across our district or across our school system. You're going to add more. I guess where I'm going with this is to me, and it's the reason I asked the question about busing and the numbers and where we were with budget. The other, the other thing that I see clearly in one place, and I'll preface it with one place, but I walk my dog every morning. I love it, between seven and eight o'clock. And there are many buses at Irwin Middle School and Irwin High School that are not running today. I understand from casual conversations over the course of the last few months, many of our monitors on our buses right now are bus drivers. They're checking temperatures, et cetera.
They, remember, they were when, when the high schools were virtual. But now, since they've been back in, that's not been the case. The drivers have been driving, and they've been looking at other means to fill those HSSAs other than using the bus drivers that they were before when the high schools were all virtual.
My eyeballs tell me that I see a lot of buses that are not running.
Right.
I've done this walk before COVID. And those buses were not there. So my point is that I think we have, if we looked into it, again, somewhere in the future, I think we have the ability, we're under budget, may mean hiring some more folks, but also taking people that, the buses that are not moving today and having those buses with drivers in them moving that would help in that district-wide intermediate situation of getting the fifth graders back into school. And for me, the argument for me is if we're going to go down that road of bringing kids back in in an A schedule, that the governor and the State Department of Health and the State Board of Education, et cetera, have said that we could, for me, it's about getting, it's not trying to fly in the face of health standards. But if we're going to bring, to me, it's about bringing more in and figuring out the buses and how that works in the intermediate school than bringing less in. And again, that's, I think that's something that, as we talk about this, if we go that route, that's a into second semester. It's not January 4th. I'm not advocating for that. That's somewhere into the future. But that's, that's the reason for the questions and why I've asked them and where my thoughts are coming from.
Well, and, and we have to consider everything.
I'd like to point out, and keep in mind, if, if you're on the school campuses in the bus lots on the Wednesdays, remember, that's a remote day. Now, we do have, we do have some service to some of our students. So that's thirty percent of the buses being used and drivers because that being predominantly a remote day. So you're going to see buses in those bus lots.
I walk five days a week, Monday through Friday.
And what I did for you, Mr. Bryan, is I texted right before the meeting started to check, be sure with the principals of those schools in the Irwin District right there. And they said, yes, all the buses that are available and drivers are driving those Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. Now, one other thing that you could be seeing is we do have buses that are sub-buses in case a bus breaks down. So you might see a few of those. And since I've been in this position five years ago, I do know our numbers have dropped. So we actually may have more sub-buses that are parked at those lots. So that's one thing that you could be seeing as well.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If we're, is that it for the bus questions?
We can move.
Okay. I would just like to share a little bit of information that I have collected recently based on my experience, which has been really helpful. So as I calculated, this is the fourth time we've made this decision. And as Dr. Baldwin is so fond of saying, the only constant has been change all along. And, and I have experienced that change not only in the external situation in terms of COVID in our schools, but also inside myself, frankly, if I'm being honest, and, and as I have learned along the way. So the, the first few times that we made this decision, I was determined to make a logical decision based on the research available, the metrics, what's happening with COVID, what I could learn about the academic situation, how it impacts our kids who are from families of low income and other, other situations of, of challenge for them. Really sort of a, in my head, let's make this really logical decision on, on what's going to be best. And this time, the fourth time, I decided I needed to add to that, not, not disregard the logic, but add to the logic by really experiencing firsthand what is in the schools. And so as Pat talks about walking by the schools, typically when I visit schools in my district, I buzz through. I say hello to people and I get out of the way because I don't want to interrupt them. They are doing important teaching and learning in the schools, and I don't want to get in the way of that. But it felt to me the last few weeks like I needed to really have firsthand eyeballs on it, body-in-the-room experience of what does this look like, what does it feel like now? So I spent a good chunk of time over the couple of weeks before... So I spent a good chunk of time over the couple of weeks before Thanksgiving, going into schools and sitting in classrooms. And I, I chose teachers based on who I thought would not be intimidated by having a board, board member in the room. Because I, again, I did not want to be disruptive, but I wanted to experience what our students are experiencing. And what I found myself asking each step of the way was, are people in this room safe and are these students learning? Over and over and over, I asked myself that. And I was in K through 12 classes, all different subjects, English, math, science, counseling, band. I was at recess. I was all over the place, but sitting there and soaking it in. And what I found being in those classrooms was that, yes, I was amazed at the extent, frankly, to which students aren't learning. I admit that I was a skeptic about this hybrid situation of a teacher wearing a mask, having kids on the screen, teaching to kids in the room. How was that going to be possible? Well, our teachers are wizards and it is possible. And kids, I saw second graders doing amazing fanatic things. And I just want to send out a huge thank you to all of the teachers who welcomed me into their classrooms. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Because this was, it was a tremendous experience for me. And just in terms of their safety, are they safe? I saw kids wearing masks all the way kindergarten up. I saw them doing a, a pretty darn good job of keeping their distance from each other. Is it perfect? No, nothing's going to be perfect because as it turns out, we are human beings. So it could be safer if it weren't for COVID. But I felt comfortable being personally in those classrooms, wearing my mask, keeping my distance. If, I also did a lot of counting. How many kids are in this room? How many kids are on the Zoom screen right now? So if we brought them all back in, how close would they be? Not a single one of the classrooms I was in would have been able to maintain a six-foot distance had we brought the whole entire class back into the room. It would not have been possible. So another thing that I learned frankly is the, the deep importance of instructional assistants at the elementary level. The extent to which they were assisting and reaching out to especially the kids who were the, the Zoomers, not the Rumors, as we say at Reynolds High School. So really, really importance of, of those assistants and great gratitude to them. So it was really clear to me at the end of this two-week experience that kids are learning, that they're relatively safe. But then again, you know, numbers are going up. We are almost to that 5% mark, which is that for the positive tests. We're at 4.9%, as we've heard today. We're nearly there. The, the numbers are, of new cases are going up. The numbers in the hospital are going up. So for me personally, coming back after the holidays, I cannot imagine giving up one of our three Ws to go into Plan A with COVID in, in the situation that it is now. We don't know what it's going to be five weeks out, six weeks out after we return after the holidays. We don't know. We can't know. We, the public health officials have said it seems likely, this is what I've heard, that as people are still inside for cold weather and experiencing COVID fatigue, we are probably going to continue to see community spread, which is going, our schools are in the community and so that's going to come back in. So until we know, it doesn't make sense to me to make a decision to go back into Plan A and, and sacrifice one of those three Ws. We're not willing to do it in this room and I don't think that we should do it in our classroom. So I just wanted to share what my experience was being in the classroom, soaking it up, and my great appreciation for our teachers who are putting in triple time to make this as successful as it possibly can be.
Thank you. Other comments?
So Madam Chair, I have, I guess, a question. If we're, the recommendation is to go into Phase One for a four-week minimum in that being that we stay under our current Plan B and just extending back to the regular daily hours. And then we talk about Phase Two and there's that to be determined. So Option One could still be feasible, but it may be that to be determined is back in March or April. Perhaps looking at where our percent positives are. And again, even, you know, going to our COVID-19 county alert system that the state has put together. And so I don't, I know that we're making decisions tonight. And as Dr. Baldwin says, with all the change, that whatever option we choose under Phase Two, it's still not something that we're going, that we're saying after four weeks with certainty will be in Phase Two.
Correct.
So while it might give people heartburn right now to even consider that Plan A, just to be clear that we're not talking about, you know, I guess, the first part of February. It's not an automatic.
Is that what you're saying, Dr. Baldwin?
Yeah, I, I believe we're going to have to continue to do exactly what we're doing, which is carefully monitoring and be responsive to change in that data. And again, the other key change agent is the governor. Because at any point in time, the governor can elect to take us back to where we were in March, which is Plan C for everyone.
Right.
So, you know, change is, is certainly, it's, it's, to predict, really, from my standpoint, to predict beyond one week in this COVID environment is very difficult.
And, and to speak, if we could, just a little bit to the governor and decisions or lack of for putting us into Plan C. I, I would like, whatever decisions we make tonight, that I would like to see, we piggyback onto the Phase One at really looking at our COVID-19 county alert system. Because, you know, we've, we've looked at that. That's a combination of the three metrics that they're using. So it's not just the percent positive that they're looking at, but they're looking at the hospital impact and the case rate. And then that puts us into three tiers, which they have listed as a yellow tier being the significant community spread, which is where we are currently and is the lowest, which is interesting given that the lowest still says significant. Orange being substantial community spread and red being critical community spread. I'd like to point out that Buncombe County is yellow, but as of this week, we are surrounded by all counties that are either orange or red. So I worry that we may not remain yellow for long. So I'd like for us to, to look at that alert system when making our decisions, especially with what we decide tonight. If we go, say it's January 1st and people didn't do what we've, we've requested as far as practicing the three Ws and Buncombe County finds themselves in the yellow or the orange or the red, that we pull back on our, our decision, whatever that decision may be, and go to a more restrictive position until we move back into a yellow, yellow zone. Because that's one of the things that the state encourages counties to do when they find themselves in the orange and red zone, is to look at ways to stop it. I don't want us to wait until we get to a red to do our part. I think this also really says to the community, you know, you've got to take some ownership. We can't do it all. And again, we, we're hearing loud and clear that people want their kids into the classroom. They want it, okay? I understand completely. We, as a school system, want the community to do their part, which is help us out by doing what the health experts are begging of you so that we don't find ourselves with a large case rate, a huge number of cases that are impacting our hospitals or a higher percent of, you know, positive test. There are simple things that we have asked the community to do. And I'm just going to put it out there that, you know, this is a, this is a time to really just put everybody on notice that we are doing the best that we can. But we have got to have help from the community if you want kids to continue to have some type of in-person learning. And for me, I just can't see us going into a less restrictive plan if we are in an orange or red zone. So I, I'm not sure where we go from there.
I'm not sure what, are you just saying that it is your feeling that if we moved from where we are today to let's, we're kind of projecting what January might look like, that we would continue with Phase One, which is on this paper, and continue under Plan B till we see what happens after the first of the year? Is that kind of what you're saying?
It, it is, except for, again, I, I think, so our Plan B-
Ms. Churchill, you never did real well on a, on a objective test, did you?
No.
You always wanted to add a little bit.
I do, I, I, yes.
Yeah, and we appreciate that because we're sending you to the state to represent us so you can do that.
That's right.
And explain to me what you just said.
So, so what I am saying, and this is why I appreciate attorneys, because they can take all of my word salad and, and make it sound logical. But what, what I am saying is that, for instance, if we were to vote tonight to go into what is recommended here, which is a Phase One,
Yes.
which is to continue Plan B, but adding that regular daily hours for a four weeks minimum, what I am saying is that the, the caveat to that would be that we remain in the yellow zone on North Carolina's county alert system for COVID-19. So that again, if right after Christmas, we find ourselves spiking, you know, continuing to spike and, and we found ourselves in that orange or red zone, we pull back to a Plan C because that would be more restrictive, which is the all-remote. And just so that we can talk about numbers here, I've pulled it up. I've pulled up the alert system. And for substantial, which is orange, the percent positive is eight to 10%. So, you know, we're not quite at 5% yet. So, I mean, we've got some wiggle room here. So to me, what I am seeing when I go into work at the hospital at 4.9% scares me. And it's really hard for me to sit here tonight and not say, pull the plug now because of what I am seeing. And so I'm trying to be objective. So I pull up this and I'm thinking, this is a pretty reasonable way to look at things, to make decisions. And I know we've had people in the community ask us for some type of data point that they could also watch to determine what, where we might be headed. But for substantial, for orange, that's eight to 10% positive. And then red is greater than 10%. And then to go along with that, they also have to have, you know, a, a high, greater than two, well, for instance, between 101 and 200 out of every 100,000 new cases in 14 days. So a substantial, to summarize, a substantial increase in cases within a two-week period.
Wait, it's all and or are they and/or?
So the counties, the counties have to meet the case rate and then they have to meet one of the other.
Okay.
So, and one of the other is percent positive and hospital impact within the county. So for instance, if you're in orange, your percent positive is eight to 10 and moderate impact on county hospitals with a case rate of the 101 to 200 per 100,000. The red is greater than 200 per 100,000 in 14 days and either greater than 10% or a high impact on county hospitals. And again, I'd like to just go back to the, the map. We actually have two counties that we, we border that are critical right now. So they're in the red zone. And then the rest that surround us are in the orange. We are the only county that is yellow.
Which two are red?
Um, I'd have to pull it up. You know, I'm horrible with the map parts, but there's-
McDowell and Yancey.
Yep.
McDowell and Madison.
Yes, I believe you're right.
Can, can I just ask really quick? Because I haven't had a-
Will you speak up, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
So I haven't really had a chance to review that. But I think my only concern with that is if there is a two-week delay and things, if, if we're saying that's our metric, right? So we say that's our metric. Well, then, you know, tomorrow, our percent positives in Buncombe County go up to 9%. But I feel like what I heard you say earlier is it's going to take two weeks for that reflection to be seen in there so we wouldn't move up for two weeks? Is that right? Can you help me understand that? Because that's the part that concerns me.
Right. So the state updates daily what the percent positives are.
Yeah, I get that.
But as far as, yes, where this moves on the alert system, it's, they update it every two weeks.
So would that, wouldn't that concern you? Like-
Could still track those three data points even if we're not looking at the color on the-
My concern is if we're telling people that we're using that and they're watching that on the screen and then they're like, but we're still in the yellow. But we know, because we know what they're tracking and we know once it gets put in there, that we may be in the red. Are we really going to wait until it's in the red on there? Do you see what I'm saying?
Right. And, and no, I would definitely want to start in orange, but I don't-
Are we, are we going to wait? If we know it's about to be in the orange two weeks from now, are we going to, really going to wait two weeks until it turns orange on there? That's, that's all I'm saying.
Or yellow now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you see what I'm saying? It's the two-week delay that kind of concerns me. If things spike-
Well, I feel like we still have to give notice and, you know, so unfortunately, yes, we could wake up tomorrow morning and find ourselves at a 7% positive. And, you know, I guess, I guess we could, you know, pull the plug and say we're, we're going to do that. But there is that piece that makes it difficult for, you know, parents and caregivers to, to make accommodations.
Sure.
Yeah. I, I can get that firsthand, absolutely.
I, I'm just saying that, you know, that to look at this so that we have something to go by.
Absolutely.
Because it does include the three.
I, I think if that were updated every day, I would be all about it. My concern is the two-week delay. If things were to escalate and we've told people that's what we're using, that's my only concern.
Yeah.
That we're being updated every day, I think that's an amazing metric because from a math perspective, I think using, you know, focused data that's happening now is, is what's kind of critical.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, and I don't think that we, as a school, I, I mean, Amy brings a tremendous amount of information and concern and she has affected me in many positive ways about her experience. But as a school system, I think we have to take that information with the information that we have and we are experiencing personally to make a decision and hopefully the best decision that we can make. That's where I'm coming from. Max? Max?
Yes, Madam Chair. If I may, I want to just add something for the public's information and knowledge. Many may be aware of this, but they hear a lot of numbers being thrown around. We've thrown around a lot of numbers tonight. 4.6% positive test rate, I think you said, in Buncombe County. And I think it's hovering around nine or better, maybe 10 statewide.
It's actually 10.1 as of today and 4.9.
4.9 in Buncombe, 10.1 in the state. But on Tuesday's meeting with the Health Department that I attended, Dr. Mullendor was very specific, and she referenced November statewide metrics. And I want to share these because I've had people ask me, "Why can... Why would you even consider sending the K through 5 children back to school on a Plan A wide open? And why can't you just send everybody?" Well, this is the rationale for that. According to Dr. Mullendor's information, on the statewide metrics, it indicated ages 5 through 9, K through 5th grade, basically, that their rate of positive cases represented only 2% of the total positive cases since March of 2020. Now, when you go into the... Then that compares to 3% total for ages 10 through 14, and also 3% total for ages 15 through 17. So that sort of answers two questions. One is the reason why it is being considered a Schedule A, a Plan A. At least the governor's office said it's okay for K through 5. But then it stops at 5, and you go into this Plan B. So that sort of answers that question. But the other thing that I think we need to stress is we're looking at those kinds of numbers in the age groups that we're teaching in public schools, which is 3% statewide. It's not 10.2% or whatever it is. It's 3%, okay? And again, I think the discussion that we also had, again, due to the fantastic job, I applaud the staff, the instructors, everybody in Buncombe County that's involved in trying to make sure that everybody's complying with the three Ws, that the schools are safe, they're clean, and getting the kids in. We talk about mental health issues and trying to get them into schools as quickly as possible. I think that's what we want to do. But I felt like it was important that that information be shared and be heard again so that it may clarify some of that. And then I think at this point in time, really, to sort of put this, maybe bring it to a point of maybe putting out a motion, I think we're all in agreement. We don't know what's going to happen due to the holidays. We're already seeing, okay, we're what, a week, week and a half or so out of Thanksgiving, and we're already starting to see a rise. We saw, like, the reports I see on national news, 1.7 million flyers all over the country. And so you have to think that that may have an impact. And I think we're starting maybe to see the beginning of that. And then I dare say that with Christmas, you may have the same... Unless something's put in place, you may see that same kind of surge. Again, you have a double surge. And how that impacts, we won't know until up in January. I think it would be safe to say that what we're doing now seems like we are being successful. We're getting the kids into the classrooms, okay? The teachers getting to lay eyes on them. And for some of those kids, that's very important. If they come from lower socioeconomic or whatever, they have their situations in the home, what have you, getting an adult person to laying eyes on them, making sure they're safe, making sure they're being fed, making sure of a lot of things. And I think that's very important. So it almost seems to me like, given the unknowns that we have, and we feel like we're doing a good job with what we're doing now, it seems to me like the prudent thing to do would simply to be to look at our Phase 1 recommendation with the caveat that we... Well, we do go to, according to that recommendation, we go to regular daily hours. We could start that as early as next week or a week after, Dr. B, so that you can make the adjustments on bells and all that kind of thing, give people notice. But it gets you some time in, get them transitioned with a final, or rather, into grade testing, that kind of stuff, and do that. And let's ride this thing through January. It gives us some breathing time to really see what COVID's happening. And folks, I try to be optimistic. I do believe that the vaccination will have a great impact, and if they get that started rolling out within the next couple of weeks, we may start seeing that working in our advantage, and that turns something around for us. The whole thing, we all admit that the change is what's going to... It's the constant in this whole thing. And if we... If the vaccine has an impact, or if this spike takes us on up into another realm, we need to be able to adjust to that. But I think if we could say, at least, as it says here, four weeks minimum, or until, you know, through January, we're going to be planning to stay this course, and then make this decision on Option 2. Because really, you know, we don't have a crystal ball. We can't make... We really don't know at this point. But, you know, I think these options that we're looking at here under Phase 2, I think they're viable options. I think we're just a little bit pushing ourselves a little bit right now to try to make that decision.
At some point in time, that's a viable option.
I'm sorry?
At some point in time, those are viable options.
Yes, yes, I agree. So to try to move us along, I would make that as a motion.
And your motion would be that we... Please tell me what your motion is.
My motion would be that we move with Phase 1, and that that would all K through 12 schools operate under the current Plan B schedule, and move to regular daily hours effective... What date are you looking at, Dr. B?
December 14th.
December 14th. December 14th.
Well, go back in time, Dr. B. December 14th for that last week.
And we would stay in that until, well, at least four weeks, probably through until the end of January. Maybe being ready after we've had more data, more time to see this, it's, man, it's a moving target. And we can... And I just think that would be the prudent thing to do.
Can we just be really clear, though, that we're saying a minimum of four weeks, and that we are not committing to anything starting February?
Well, you know, and even, maybe we don't need to even say a minimum because, you know, if this thing were to have a double spike and really things went south, we may need to pull the plug and go to Plan C distant only.
Right. I just don't want folks to get their hopes up that come February, we're all going to be back in, when we just don't know yet.
We don't know. We don't know. But I would say to exercise that option until further notice. But I think that we should agree to allow at least a two-week notice to parents, but knowing that what we're looking at, if things are improving, we want to get those kids back in the classroom. We want to go back to a traditional learning environment.
Okay. Is there a second to Mr. Queen's motion?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Is there discussion?
I'd like to still bring up, though, that we've been asked to try to have some kind of concrete data point to go off of, and...
Who has asked us?
I've gotten emails from parents and actually random community members and teachers and staff about, you know, specifically, is there a percent positive that we can agree on to, you know, move us in either direction?
Sort of like people watch the weather forecast.
Correct. And I don't think we can go by just that one number. And I can appreciate Ms. Simpkins saying that, you know, this would be really great if it was every, you know, if it was updated every day. But on the flip side of that, if it changed every day, that could be problematic, too. I think, though, that even before this is updated, you start to see little pieces, like our hospital numbers are going up. But this is still a pretty big chunk from where we are now and moving to, you know, an orange phase. There's quite a few things that have to go wrong, like you said, double spike in cases and what have you. But I just think that, you know, what is it that we're going to decide on if two days after Christmas, Buncombe County's looking at a 7% positive rate?
Could we go ahead and vote on this motion and then do a separate motion about the metrics?
You can call that, can't you?
Yeah, you can call that.
Okay. Can we go ahead and call this motion? And then, are you okay with that, Amy?
I'm fine with that.
Could we have some discussion first, Madam Chair, before the question is called?
Yeah, I'm not saying we need to necessarily call the questions right this minute, but I just wanted to...
I think what you're asking me is that I'm not amending... I'm not trying to amend the... I'm just saying we need to consider this.
I think that's a really good point, and I think it would, if we could discuss it separately as a separate motion, that might move us along even more.
All right, Mr. Bryant?
So we've read a lot of numbers. I want to read the last eight days. These are confirmed numbers. This is not, have we got to wait two weeks to get something? These are the last eight days, number of daily confirmed cases of COVID-19 in Buncombe County, starting Wednesday before Thanksgiving, 71. Zero on Thanksgiving Day, which is not unusual. I don't think it was reported because the day after Thanksgiving was 104. Don't think it was 104 that day. I think it was probably 104 over two days, but that's the way it was reported. 63, 70, 47, 54, and yesterday, 36. So those are numbers we know. When you look at the blue graph and the dots that the state puts out looking at Buncombe County, you see a leveling. I think we have to be careful about the what-ifs and how far out down the road we're looking. And yet I think we need to do some things. And I agree, Ms. Churchill, we need help from the community. But as I try to remember back to when my kids were in school, if you asked me to help you, and I had something that I was helping towards, I'd be more inclined to help you. And what I mean by that is if I know that... I'm just picking some dates. February the... Is the 5th a Monday?
The 1st.
1st is a Monday? The week of February 1st? Oh, let's say the week of February the 8th. I knew that we were going to... Wednesday was going to become a day of students in school on Plan B. And February the... What'd you say it was, the 5th? What was that Monday?
The Monday was the 1st.
The 8th? So let's just say two weeks later, February 22nd, I knew that we were going to Plan A, K through 4. I think we miss an opportunity here. We don't meet again until January the 14th. We can... Regardless of where we put these things in place, if we're into February before we would even have a Plan A in place, whether it's K 4 or K 5, there's two more board meetings for us, one in January and one in early February. And if the things look bad, there's nothing that keeps us from coming in in an emergency special call meeting to look at it, to make a change. And yet we give our kids and our parents something they can put their hand on and touch and say, "There's a little bit of light at the end of that tunnel, and it's not a train coming towards me. I've got something out there." And if the metrics look bad and look worse, but those are the daily numbers. It's not today, but those are the daily numbers. Those are clearly, over the last four days, leveling off. I understand from a medical profession, you've got to have more data than that, but you've got to start somewhere. If I go back more days, the numbers are less. So I just went back eight days in looking at this, and it's updated daily on the Citizen Times website. So I just think regardless of what it is, that this board should consider, and I would hope that Mr. Queen's motion is not the end of discussion so that if we were to look at... And I'm looking to you, Madam Chair, that would not end it, I would hope, to at least continue to discuss those other two things that were kind of put out there to see if we could come to some date, future, that we can put out there and say to our parents, "Look..." And we'll know. We'll know before the end of January if we can do some of those things in February or not. We will know based upon the Christmas vacation. But we may not know if something happened. We just don't know. We can't... We won't know what's going to go on later. So that's my thought. I wanted to get those numbers out there, and hopefully we could continue the discussion after voting on Mr. Queen's motion.
Okay.
May I? I appreciate Mr. Bryant's comments, and by no means that was my motion intended to be, you know, carried on and on and on. I want... I think we all want and hope to get the kids back in a traditional learning environment. The next... Our next board meeting in January is January 14. And if we vote to approve the motion that's on the floor, it will bring us back together on the 14th. And by deleting the four-week or whatever, setting a timeframe, we will have more data then. We will know what kind of surge or lack of a surge that we're seeing in the numbers following Christmas by then. And the other thing I would mention is the testing and the positivity is important. But what I think really is more important is looking at the hospitalizations. That's your seriously sick people. Lots of people may be asymptomatic, test positive, asymptomatic, quarantine, get back to work. But it's... I think if you're really looking at the severity of the disease, you need to look at hospitalizations. And I want to remind everyone, and everyone that may be watching or listening as well, Mission Hospital is a regional hospital. They receive patients not just from Buncombe County. It's regional across western North Carolina and other states even, send patients to Mission Hospital. And they are accepting those patients if, as I understand, if they're accepting patients that are COVID patients, they will accept them. So the hospitalizations, if we start looking at those kind of numbers, I think it's important. If we're wanting to know what the severity is within Buncombe County, we need to consider and ask the hospital, if they could drill down, or the Health Department, and let us know how many of those hospitalizations are from people within Buncombe County. Because that could skew, gives a skewed kind of idea of how many, you know, people have been hospitalized, you say, "Oh, the hospitals have this many ICU beds." But it may not be occupied by all folks who were testing positively in the county.
But if they get overwhelmed, they're overwhelmed, no matter where those people are coming from.
Exactly, exactly. They may be overwhelmed, but you really, again, that's just another little piece, you know? There's lots of moving parts, and data can present itself in a strange way sometimes.
What I'd like to do is call the question and us vote on Max's motion. And Kim has asked for our attorney to restate Max's motion.
I think Mr. Queen had it written down, didn't you?
I was going from Phase 1 of the plan. I can restate it if it would help you. What the motion was...
Needs it for the minutes.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
Kim needs it for the minutes.
Yes, ma'am. My motion was all K through 12 schools operate under the current Plan B schedule, and however, we're moving to regular daily hours beginning on December 14th, okay? So we'd be extending to regular class day.
Sure.
And that would go on until basically further notice. Our plan is we meet January 14th. We would review the data at that time, and then our February meeting's on February the 4th.
Okay.
But we'll stop right there.
Yeah. Okay. Could we vote on that?
Well...
Knowing.
But I think the "in" part of his motion kind of undid being able to talk about Pats. It didn't...
Matt, I'd like to do Pats as a separate motion.
No, I know, but I feel like the last sentence that he said, like, "Until further notice," would disallow us from putting dates on Pats.
Potentially. Yeah, that verbiage.
I would like to with... I don't know. I think we need attorney help there.
I don't think so. I think we can vote on Max's motion, and then we can...
Ask the attorney.
All right, Mr. Shatley.
The term "until further notice" was not used in the original motion.
Okay. Let's edit that out.
What if we said till...
Well, it may be what he means. No, I don't want to edit it.
At least February 1st.
Willing.
What if we said till at least February 1st?
Or four weeks minimum.
Well, that would be February 1st.
How about just four weeks minimum?
Just going forward.
That would be February 1st.
Okay.
Because you... Nothing you're proposing is before February 1st anyways.
If it starts December 14th, it's not four weeks. That's more like six weeks.
Well, it's four weeks after we get back from Christmas, which I think...
The reason I chose to not include the four-week notice was if things, like I said earlier, if things were to go south and the situation really declined, we...
I think we have that...
We will pull the plug.
Do that anyways. We have that ability anyway.
And that's why I don't want to have...
Right.
But I think, by just saying, this is what we're going to do. However, we are reviewing this thing. We don't have to include it in the motion, but we all know and we all accept we're going to be reviewing this thing constantly.
Yes, we are.
And if it went in either direction, there's modifications, and we're not binding ourselves to a minimum of four weeks to stay with this plan. We could do something else. Yes.
The motion I seconded was for a minimum of four weeks, I believe.
Ms. Matthews, did you record any part of Mr. Queen's original motion, the first time he stated? motion the first time he stated it?
Yeah, but I just wanted to make sure.
Can
That Phase 1, and all K through 12 operate under Plan B for at least four weeks, and increasing the school hours to the normal school hour, having that an hour at noon on December 14th. And then I have Andrew May there until February and
Let's just take that off.
Yeah. My, my question, Mr. Queen, would be what, what would happen for us to review that we would take that off?
Take what, the hours off?
Take the, take the full day off. I understand something might happen that would push us to Plan C.
I don't think he said take the full, full day off.
Well, that's my point. Why do we need an end date?
We don't.
Is, is, the, the motion would be, it would seem to me to be to add the hour, go back to the regular school day, beginning Monday, December the 14th, period.
That would be correct. That would potentially work too. I think what Mr. Queen's motion was, was basically Phase 1 as it is here, except for we're going to move the hour up to December 14th. And that would run until, till February. But I, yeah, I mean, there's different ways to skin that cat, and I think you're accurate, Mr. Bryant.
Yeah, my, my question is why would it stop in February?
And I, and I understand the question.
Well, he's saying at least, so. I don't know that it would stop in February. To me, this just gives us a working motion. And that what we're asking is, if I'm wrong, that we're asking to get into this, to reassess where we are, to implement the things that you're about to give us to implement as we live through this and understand what's happening in January. Am I right?
You, you are correct. And I may have very well in reading this because under Phase 1, it says a four week minimum. But then as we began our discussion following the motion, it seems like that we don't need to specify a period of time. And I'm willing to alter my motion either way that would please this body, either leave the four week minimum or take it out in case, like I said, it's very dynamic. It could go either way. And why, why even mention how long it's going to be there? But I think everybody realizes that we're going to be revisiting this issue on January the 14th, and we're going to be revisiting on February the 4th, and
We're going to be revisiting this.
And probably for the rest of the, rest of the semester.
Five.
It's going to be revisited.
Right. So what I'd like to do is call the question and us vote on Max's motion, which is, can you, Stacia's asking for you to repeat that.
It was Cindy's, and I'll make it simple. Cindy said that she understood it to be the original motion to include the four weeks.
Yes.
Is that correct?
A minimum of four weeks.
At least four weeks, I think was the language that Ms. Matthews read back.
And that would be fine to do that. It was seconded that way, so let's not change it. Let's move forward.
Okay. All right, I have a motion and a second. Could I get a vote, please? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed?
Madam Chair, I'm going to vote no, simply because of the, the restriction on it. I just don't see where we would ever go back and take an hour away based upon medical metrics. So to me, if we're doing it, it's forward. So I will vote no based upon the language of the motion.
Okay. All right, I've got three people that are sitting next to me.
Oh, I said aye.
Are you an aye?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I can't.
Why don't you do a roll call vote?
Okay, Peggy?
Aye.
Aye. Pat, no. Amanda?
I said aye.
Aye. Amy?
Aye.
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 And Anne. So that's
Six, one.
Six. Thank you. It's bad.
I heard your six voices.
I'm glad I've got some math teachers on this board. That is not pretty. Okay, thank you. The motion passes, and Kim's got it down. Can, Stacia's wanting some words from you. Can you do that? She can't hear you.
So I made sure I have this right. And that was your question was that all K, all K-12 students will operate under the current Plan B, and on December 14th, with their regular school hour day, and continue on that schedule for a minimum of four weeks. Is that a minimum of four weeks from December 14th, or are we in the same minimum of four weeks beginning January 4th?
I, I think the way Mr. Queen originally phrased the motion was that the regular daily schedule would begin on December 14th, and the four week, the four week minimum though would begin in, in the second semester when we come back from the winter break.
That's what I thought too, so that would be January 4th. The mic, Stacia's having trouble. Thank you.
Good. A minimum of four weeks beginning January 4th?
Yes.
Mr. Queen motion was that all K-12 students would continue to operate under a Plan B, and that on December 14th, all schools would go to regular hours and continue on that schedule for a minimum of four weeks, beginning January 4th. And Ms. McMahon seconded the motion.
Motion carried.
And the motion carried with a vote of six to one.
Thank you. Now, moving right along. Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
It's your turn.
So part of some ongoing discussion and, and, well, the logic and the rationale behind some of the things that have just been kicked around and may continue to be kicked around was to not put us in a situation where we, at whatever point, if we go to a, an A schedule, K4, K5, whatever it is, that it be done all at once.
It be done, I'm sorry.
That it not be done all at once, that we phase it in, so that we, as part of the rationale, get in the school day, day back to the full length of time with some time in there. So my, the, the notes that I had made, and, and these will, I'm going to split these in half into two different things, because I think that's been the pleasure of the board in the past, even though I've not done that prior to this. I, I think it's important that we, that we, prior to bringing an A schedule back, that we, that Wednesday becomes a school day, a, a, and in the building, school day as Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday are. So as I looked at the calendar and was looking at, at, at this, what I had come up with, and I'm going to put this out there for discussion, but not in the form of a motion yet, just as for discussion, so that we don't tie anybody's hands, beginning January the 18th, for a three week period, and it actually becomes a two week period because the week of the January the 18th, the 18th is a holiday. And I would hope as the school system, we were, even if we didn't change anything, we were going to have Tuesday through Friday be Tuesday, Wednesday A, and Thursday, Friday B, but maybe not. But that for three weeks, we go to a, to a, a schedule, a beat, staying in B, but we go to Wednesday becomes a school day. And in the example that Dr. Baldwin laid out, that first week with Martin Luther King holiday would only be four days of school. The following week would be five, with Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday being the A students, Thursday and Friday being the B students, and the following week being Monday, Tuesday, the A students, and Wednesday through Friday, the B students. So I throw those dates out there for discussion and for the idea of discussion prior to making it as a motion, provided that Mr. Shatley doesn't look at me and tell me that I can't do that.
No discussion without a motion. No, I don't think you can make that motion.
Because it contradicts
Because it contradicts the motion that was just adopted by
After, be after February 1st.
The board.
Because of the date.
The date. If you said, if you said it could start on February the 1st, I think it would be a valid motion.
All we did was just add
We said we were
The, the motion was to stay in, to stay in the, the current Plan B for four weeks.
So then my motion date would change.
February 1st.
So just to clarify, Pat, are you referring then to Option 2, whether it's K4 or K5? But is that what you're describing?
I think he's saying all, are you saying all schools?
No, I'm saying K through 13.
Oh, K through 13. So it's, so you're looking at Option number three. Is that, I just want to make sure I understand what you're, what you're referring to.
K through 13, beginning for a three week period.
Oh, Option number three is 5 through 13, isn't it? Okay, so it's a combination of two and three.
Yeah. I, I, the last thing that I got from Dr. Baldwin didn't have specific dates and things attached to it. So I've, I've moved away from that. It was more generic terms and just plugged in my own day. So beginning February 1st then, for a three week period, that we go to that format of B schedule, K through 13, but Wednesday becomes a full school day.
Alternating Wednesday?
Yes.
Is this, are we
And, and, and now that I'm sitting here thinking, since we have one of those week, my initial proposal had one week with just four days, I think it would probably be best if we did that at a four week segment, so that we had an equal, if we did it, we would have the same ratio of the A students getting three days, two of those weeks, the B students getting three days, two of those weeks.
So does your date remain February 1, in that regard?
It, it seems as if that's where it has to be.
Okay.
Based upon Mr. Shatley's clarification for me.
Unless you want to go through like a motion to reconsider and that sort of procedure.
I don't think the pleasure of the board is going to be to reconsider that, so I wouldn't, I don't, I'm not going to put that out there.
And I appreciate your willing to work with us, taking one issue at a time and then bringing up another issue. So
Well, in, in conjunction with that, it is, again, going back to the original premise, it is at the end of that period to then go to a, an A schedule for whatever the pleasure of the board is, either a K4 or a K5.
Working toward an A schedule.
At the end of that four week period.
Sure. Your February 1st, four weeks.
Correct.
Uh huh. So you, so you would lock us into then March 1st, going into Plan A, no matter what the metrics are doing at that point? Is that what you're saying? Would it lock us?
No, we, we would, we would simply be, we would simply be passing something to, to give to the public to let them know, if the metrics change, there's nothing that keeps this board from coming back and reversing that or anything we've done. We've, we've done that before.
Except that then people are planning towards a March 1st.
Well, we had a special call meeting shortly after a board meeting where people were planning towards things and we changed it. I mean, if the metrics tell us we've got to change, then we've got to change. And Dr. Baldwin's been clear, you've been clear, I think we've all been clear. The one clarity with this is there is no clarity. If the, if the medicine and the science tells us we've got to come back and do something different, then we'll do it. We have to.
I, I like what Pat is saying. I like it because I think from an administrative standpoint at a school, having those dates to work toward, because it, it gives you like a deadline where that's the soonest that can happen. It's not going to happen any sooner. It could get pushed, right? We might have to kick the can, but it gives us, rather than us meeting on January the 18th and then, and then the metrics maybe look good, we don't know, we really don't. And then we say, well, we'd like to go back February 1st, and then what we're hearing from administration is that's too soon. That's too soon. So if we, if we go ahead and put dates on it, we can always, we can always push them out if we have to. If things aren't looking good, we can, we can push them out. But I, I like the idea of putting dates on the phase back in. I do want to talk about the Wednesday thing. When I, when I think back as a high school teacher, many years I had three preps. And right now, what that would look like is really nine preps. So I'd be prepping for like my A students, my B students, and at the high school level, they also have the full-time virtual students in that same class. I can't, I literally can't even, I get chills thinking about it. I can't imagine what they're, what they're having to deal with right now. So at, at the high school level, and, you know, the middle school level, I had two preps as a math teacher. But, you know, it's, it's not quite as much, but it concerns me there too. I haven't worked at the elementary school level, so I can't really speak to that. But the, taking away the Wednesdays at the high school level is very concerning for me.
So, so what I think we're, maybe simplifying things is that we, you know, we voted on Phase 1, and perhaps we vote to use Option 1, which is Plan A, five days a week.
Phase 2, Option 1?
Yes, Phase 2, Option 1, which is an all-in, K4 schools operating under Plan A, five days weekly. Now, I say that because I think that solves the concerns of taking away the Wednesdays while you're in Plan B. I think it simplifies things so that you're not adding alternate Wednesdays, and parents and caregivers are trying to determine which week their kid goes on a Wednesday. I could see that being a little bit confusing. I just think back to when I, I can't remember when to put my trash can out and when to put the recycle one out. And again, I go back to, we, we don't have to put, I mean, I guess we could put a date, a February date there, but I still want to say that we do that with some other metric that says, if we have reached this metric as a county, it's off the table, period. It gets us to where I believe our parents want us to be in the five days a week, but it's not a guarantee that that's what we're going to do. It gives the teachers, as long as we're in Plan B, the Wednesdays off. And I just envision, honestly, this Phase 2, Option number one, being closer to March. That would be given the timeline that they're predicting for the vaccines. So I would honestly think that the soonest that we would be considering that would be, you know, around the first part of March.
So are you saying that you like what Pat Bryant is saying, you just want the beginning, you would prefer the beginning part to be in March as opposed to February?
Well, I'm not even saying, I'm just, to keep, again, to keep it simple, to go back to to be determined, that we vote on Phase 2, Option number 1, and not, I, I, you could do two things. You could do to be determined, which is what's been recommended, so not putting a date in there, or you could choose a date, whatever that date is that the board decides on. But I would really strongly encourage that if we do that, we have a very clear picture of what it takes to pull us off of getting all of our kids back in.
Where we would have to be with our metrics in order to sacrifice the third W or one of the Ws.
That is absolutely correct, yes. What are we as a board comfortable with giving up that third W? And is that going to be a 5% positive, a 10% positive? The, the dashboard that I was referring to with the three metrics, including the hospitalization use, I, I just feel like we need to, other, because otherwise, we're, we're going to be right where we're at, where, you know, you're inundated with the two sides and what they want. And
We're going to be there anyway, Amy.
Well, at least this, again, gives, and it, I think it, I think it does give that light at the end of the tunnel, that, you know, the board is saying that, you know, we are, when the time comes, however it's decided, we're going to go all in, five days a week. Because I, I look at these other options, and it's just, it's like just kind of dipping your toe in the pool. And we're hearing from staff that they want to keep that Wednesday for asynchronous, and we, you know, so, so we could do that under Plan B. I envision a, a much better scenario in our county than what we are looking at now, and even what we were looking at last month, before we are in Plan A. and even what we were looking at last month before we are in Plan A.
Can I, can I just add, in terms of the metrics, we've talked about two different things. We've talked about what is it going to have to look like for us to pull the plug and go all remote? So the negative side of the metrics? And now you're sort of swinging it around to talking about the positive side of the metrics, is how good do we have to be in order to go into this Plan A at the elementary level?
Considering what Mr. Bryant was saying, is that...
And so I think that if we want to be specific about our metrics, if we want to give people something to look, look towards, like the weather forecast, we need to go at both ends of the range. You see what I'm saying? So we need to say at the, on the downs, on the dark side, if it gets this bad, then we're headed towards going all remote. And if it gets this good, then we're headed towards bringing the elementary kids back in Plan A. Does that, does that fit with how you're thinking about it?
That, that would be, yes, that, yeah, that would be fine.
So what would that look like, Cindy?
It's just determining what does, what is that data point? What are we looking at? What metrics are we going to decide on? What are we landing on?
And I, I don't feel like I, you know, in, in this moment, while we're swirling around, I don't feel like I could, I have the knowledge in my head to be able to pick what those numbers would be, although I really like the idea of giving some, giving people something to look towards that is specific like that. But I'm not in a position to be able to nail that down right now. I don't know if other people are.
But, but here's the thing, the state actually has, that has done it for us with their COVID county emergency.
On the negative side.
Well, or the positive, because we could say once, you know, if we are in the yellow...
But we're in the yellow now and we know that we wouldn't.
But we've already voted on our four, on our minimum time of being in Plan B. So we're talking about the...
But isn't yellow the best on that dashboard?
It, it is, but what I'm saying is, is that we, so we've already voted on, for the, for the time being, we're going to be in Phase 1. I am talking about how we enter into Phase 2. What does that look like?
Right, but if we, if our numbers were exactly the same as they are now with it being yellow, I would not be in a place where I would vote for sacrificing one of the Ws.
So perhaps we could say yellow and a percent positive of less than 3. Or less than 4. So you could actually use both of those, because right now, if you think about it, we're at 4.9. And Mission Hospital is a large hospital, and I think that's part of where that capacity issue is coming and why that's still keeping us in the low impact. But I, I feel like maybe we choose a percent positive. Think back to what we were comfortable with opening up schools in the first place, back in the fall, what our numbers looked like, and being in yellow.
Amy, on that dashboard, is it possible to have 3% positive and be in red or orange? Is that, is that a possibility on that dashboard?
It, it could be, depending on your county size hospital, because that's the, that's the or piece.
I thought that that was one that had to be, though.
But, but honestly, in our county, probably not, yeah. Because honestly, we haven't really started to see a big uptick in our, in our hospitalization use.
Well, I've gotten information...
It's the last couple of weeks, really, about a week and a half or so.
I've just recently gotten information from us, from Buncombe County Schools, that we have a new posting that went on our school dashboard, I believe today. And our numbers are new cases, this week is 27. And then we already had 15 staff and students. So the total for us in Buncombe County Schools on our dashboard is 32. That's where we are. We have 7,000 employees, 23,000 students, and we have 32 people. I think, I think that percent positive under 3? I, I could give up the six-foot distancing if we were there. Personally, I could vote for that.
I could, I, I, I...
What could you vote for, Speaker? I could vote for the Plan A, which is sacrificing some six-foot distancing if we were below 3% positive rate of testing. And that is Option, Phase 2, Option 1, or Option 3? Option 1 is what we're talking about, is what sort of metrics would we need in order to be able to go into Phase 1, Option 1, whether it's K4 or K5 or whatever? Were you going to say something?
No, I would just say, make sure that you all understand what those numbers mean. I'm, I'm not an expert. I don't begin to know.
So of the test, of the tests that are given in Buncombe County, 3%?
Well, my, my, my point, Ms. McMahon, is there's, there's, I mean, I know there's one medical professional in the room, but just make sure if, if you put metrics on something that, that you all, all feel comfortable with it, but you, your, your local health professionals feel comfortable with it too. Because, you know, New York went through this very same thing and, and then they, they automatically hit some number and they shut down the New York City schools, go, go back into Plan C or whatever the heck they called Plan C. And...
Five days.
And, and it didn't last very long, simply because everybody else felt like this was the one place they wanted to keep open, shut down other things.
So do we need to take more time to figure out this metric question?
I mean, my, my, yes, my suggestion, and I apologize for interrupting your debate, but my suggestion would be to talk with some, you know, with their local health directors and medical professionals about what those numbers should look like. I mean, I don't disagree with you. I think 3% sounds like a great number to begin to go with Plan A. But when I really start to think about it, is it too, is it too low? Would 4% be okay?
But I'll just say this, though, we asked all those questions beginning before school even started and we never really got a, an exact answer from them. We, we just got, you know, the information that's out there. But again, if you're, you know, you're not talking about just one number. You're talking about using the state's metrics that they've determined, which puts what counties into critical zones and, and a percent, so that you have more than just one thing to look at. Because I think that's part of the problem with New York, is that they were just looking at one number. The state looks at hospital use, you know, the, the, I, I call it the surge in cases, because they look at a certain number over 100,000 in a 14-week period, and the percent positive.
Could we be in yellow if we were above 10%? Is that possible on that dashboard?
Yes.
That is possible on that dashboard.
Because you have the hospitalization.
And I'll give you another example.
It's the and/or.
You know, there's, right now, Buncombe County has one number that qualifies for the red category. And that's the number, the 14-day case rate per 100,000. We're at 240. But our, a percent positive is below 5%. And then there's low impact to the hospitals. So there has to be middle or high impact to the hospital or, or a much higher percentage to get to an orange or red. That's the either/or one there.
And that's one of the concerns that we've talked about from the very beginning with all of this, is the, you know, the effects on the hospitals. You know, we, where we're doing all of this to try to slow the spread. So, yeah, I, fortunately, again, fortunately, Mission, the Mission Health System is a large system. And while our numbers are going up and it's making me extremely nervous, I could see where, if we looked at, you know, remaining in yellow and a low percent positive, that we could balance the two and, and have some safety, you know, with what we have in our schools to forego one of those Ws. I mean, I think it's great that we, we wait and we ask, you know, our county health department, but I don't think they're going to give us a number. They haven't given us a number. They're just going to, again, give us the information that's out there, you know?
And I'm not sure that we, we should try to do a number. I, I just think it's, you know, you put it out there and then we're not going to achieve it or something's going to happen. Or, but I do like what Mr. Bryant's saying about planning ahead and giving people something to put a hook on. If we could do that without putting numbers out there. If we could say to people in some kind of correct way, Mr. Shatley, that we are working toward this and these are items of concern.
Madam Chair, and Mr. Bryant, since, I believe you made, did you make the motion?
No, it was not, it was, it was, it was my thought to put out for discussion prior to a motion.
Okay, well, could we, could we take your, your concept, and you're dead on with your concept, in my opinion, and just simply say that we agree to a progression? And the logical progression would be just what you said, that we would, I believe you said that you would open, as of February, our hope would be that we would open in the, basically all K through 13, on the B plan, alternating Wednesdays. And it'd be on a regular time schedule, timeframe. Is that what you said?
Correct.
Okay. That, that would be our option for phase in. We don't know, we, we hope that we would be in 1st of February. It may not be. But at least that puts people on notice as to what our planning is, that we're taking steps toward our goal. That's the first step. And then the next step, I assume, would be going back to Amy, either opening up the, you know, maybe the section of the K4 and putting them on a five-day-a-week plan or possibly things are improved, we'd just be able to open it up and put everybody on back to normal. But it's incremental. But I think at least getting your point across, Pat, that our next step in that progression is exactly what you said. And it's just a question of when we can do it. But that puts everyone on notice that this will be our, this is our plan, this is our strategy. We're moving along, we want to move into it, and as soon as we can do that, we're going to do that. And then, once that's done, things continue to improve, we'll, we'll get back in school as quickly as we can.
Okay, so how can we do that, Mr. Shatley? Well, but just before we get to that, I mean, the problem is going back to what Amanda said about when you're in Plan B, especially middle and high school, you have so many preps that that's what Wednesday is needed for, is those plans. And so if we, if we take away the Wednesday for especially middle and high school teachers, we are overwhelming them if they're still in Plan B. If they're in Plan A, it's, it's not an overwhelm situation in the same way. But if they're in Plan B, it's, it's an overwhelm for people who are already feeling overwhelmed.
I believe if we are in Plan B, we need to keep Wednesdays as an asynchronous learning day. Maybe I wasn't clear about that in the beginning. But that's why, that's why I'm saying that we, to me, looking at that and understanding what staff has asked, asked for, I know it looks scary when you're looking at it on paper, but again, just keeping in mind, it could be way down the road still. We're looking at Phase 1 and then Phase 2, Option Number 1. Because again, that gives, as long as we're in Plan B, I think we can all, you know, recognize what we've heard loud and clear from staff is, as long as they are doing that, you know, teaching, you know, virtual, remote and in-person, they need that Wednesdays off, so...
And it's not off, it's not off.
I'm sorry, yes, forgive me. Didn't mean to say that, I'm going to get lashed here for that one. But, you know, to have that as an asynchronous, I'm, I'm not in education, I'm still learning the asynchronous thing. But if we are to the point where we are talking about putting kids in Plan A, then we should not really need that Wednesday asynchronous learning day. I'm just saying, I'm not sure when that's going to be. Personally, I find it hard to believe that it's going to be as soon as the first part of February. I would love to be proven wrong.
And I really would hate to get people's hopes up about the 1st of February, personally, yeah.
One, one thing that I've been asked, and I really, you know, when I'm asked this by teachers in the K through 5 grades, is they're getting the impression that on the Wednesdays or this, that they feel like it's important to have their kids in their classroom. That's what I, that's what I'm hearing back. And they, I think, including or making that Wednesday a workday where the kids are present and going with the alternating group schedule, they're much in favor of it. And it seems to me that they ask the question, but why is, why aren't, and the parents are asked the question, why aren't the high schools, why aren't they doing the same thing as, as the younger kids? Why couldn't they do that as well? And I'm not sure that the, I haven't heard a really good explanation of that, because those, those teachers, high schools, we've got six of them, we've got four intermediate schools, that's 10 schools. We've got 43 schools in our, in our, in our system. So there are 33 schools that are elementary grades.
23.
How, how, I'm, you've got 40, 43 campuses, 43 schools? And you've got six high schools, four intermediates? Oh, and the middle schools, I'm sorry, yeah, okay. So the numbers there, you still have more elementary schools that would fall into that criteria than we have the grades from intermediate up through the high school. And those teachers are working every bit as hard as the other teachers. And it seems to me that we need to treat, treat them all the same.
But, but we're not, because at the elementary school level, those kids that are remote only, there are dedicated teachers teaching remote-only kids. So those, those teachers that are in the classroom with A-day, B-day kids, they just teach those kids. They don't have this third cohort of remote-only kids. Where if I was still teaching high school math, I would have an A-day group, a B-day group, and my remote-only group in one class. And then potentially have two other whole preps. So I could be teaching Math 1, Math 2, Calc AP, and have three different subsets in each one of those classes. And that's why I would argue that it is different. And so we can't treat them the same because it's not the same.
All right.
I think an elementary school teacher might say that I teach language arts, reading, science, math to all the kids in my classroom, because I've heard them say that to me. That, that, all of our teachers do phenomenal work and they, and they have different preps and different things they all signed up for that, that are different. But it's, it's the nature of...
Away from elementary teachers.
Yeah, it's the nature of...
She did an excellent job explaining, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
It's the nature of where they are and what they do and who they do it with. And I, I would echo Mr. Queen's thoughts. I have clearly, what I've heard clearly from parents and teachers in the Irwin District, okay? And I think we all hear generically from a lot of people who are sending us emails. But what I've clearly heard is that we want our kids back in the building as much as we can have them. And we will adjust and make work the things we have to do that will be different and harder. And that, they, lost my mic. If they feel, many of them are not members of BCAE, and some of them are and still feel like their voices are not being heard. We, 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 we've got to take into account that even counting up all the emails we get, with 2,000 teachers in Buncombe County Schools, 2,200 and a total of about 4,000 employees, we're hearing from a very small percentage of people talking to us. And, and so I think we have to try, and I, and I know it's not easy, it's hard, but we've got to try to figure out a way that makes, to me, makes the most sense for kids first. That's what we're, that's our charge, that's what we're here for, is those kids. And I know it all goes together, it does. Without teachers, our kids are in trouble. But without students, teachers don't have jobs. I learned that real quick coaching college basketball. I thought for a long time it was all about me. It ain't about me, it's about my players, always was. Because without them, I don't have that job. So the, the challenge for us, I think, is to find a way to mix those two things and to come up with a way that balances that. And that was my rationale for the phasing, and, and this could have led to different types of phasing, but for phasing some things in to a point of what we're allowed to do now from the governor's office. And I, I'm, I'm very hesitant about the, the, I don't even know what to call it, Ms. Churchill. What's the correct term for what you're describing in terms of metric? Metrics?
Yes.
I'm hesitant for that and of that for the, for a number of reasons, but the, the, we're in much better shape, it sounds like, in Buncombe County on those metrics than the state is, correct?
We are.
And yet the state hasn't backed away. And the governor and the state health folks have not said we need to back away from those considerations in, in our schools and what we're doing. So I think we have to be careful there. And I, I just, I, I'm happy, I think I know where the motion's going to go, Ms. Bryant. I know where the motion's going to go, Ms. Frank, that it's going to get defeated, but I'm happy to make it in a form of a motion.
Well, if you don't, I've got some words down here I'm going to lay to it.
Do what?
I said, if you don't, I've got some words down here I'm going to lay to it, so we can get on with our business, go ahead.
And then we could move on to discussing the potential of K four, K five, because I think the motion that I'm going to make is going to be defeated, based upon the feedback, but then we can move on and be done with the discussion, if that would be helpful.
It would be very helpful.
So my motion would be, and I'm not going to use the Phase Twos, I'm just going to use dates, beginning February first, the week of February first, and running for four weeks, K through 13, stays in Plan B, with Wednesday becoming a day of students in the building, in two of those weeks, the A students will have three days, and the B students two, and two of those weeks, the B students will have three days, and the A students two.
That's your motion?
That's my motion, that would, that would run the entire month of February, that would be four full weeks in February.
Okay, do we have a second?
I will second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second, and Lord have mercy, we've discussed it and ad nauseam, is there anyone that wants to say anything else?
I'd like to just say that I'll be voting against that, because again, I feel as long as we are in Plan B, we need to allow that Wednesday to be an asynchronous learning day, and again, I apologize for saying off, I'm still trying to figure out synchronous and asynchronous, so I am fully aware of what our teacher and staff do every day, and, but that is the reason that I would vote no.
Thank you, are there other comments from board members?
I, I like the, taking it in with that extra step, that instead of going to A just flat out, and I think it's important too, as we've talked about a little bit, is to let the parents know exactly what we're planning to do, giving them some specifics, our next step will be, we don't have to put dates on it, but the next step will be this, and then the next step after that will be this, and also letting them know, I was interested with the Health Department when they said that the schools were not where the kids were coming, the kids that did contact COVID, it was not in the school, it was in the community, and I think that it would be important to stress that with the parents, that we want them to enter into this partnership of reaching these goals to get their kids back there by keeping the kids safe once they're out of the schools, you know, in the afternoons and on the weekends, and Christmas Vacation and all like that, let them know that, and I, it frightened me a little bit when they made the comment that none of the vaccines have been tested on children, and I thought, well then, when are the kids going to start getting vaccines, I mean, we still have to go through all that testing to see if they're going to, you know, so that we have a vaccine for children, so it's got to be a partnership between the schools and the parents, and if we can give the parents, here's step one, here's step two, here's step three, with or without dates, you know, but here's a plan with some specific things that we are going to be doing, and, and we need you to be doing these things, and I think we might be more successful.
We might be moving on the right road.
Can I, can I just clarify, just for the public, I don't think we can say there has been no spread within our schools, there has been minimal spread, but we have had some clusters, and, and there has been spread, some, some small amount of spread, and I, I just want to make sure that we're being accurate about that.
Madam Chair, I think it'd be appropriate to call the question.
All right.
Does anybody understand the motion? February first, running four weeks, grades K through 13, stay in Plan B, but add Wednesdays as student days alternating between A-day and B-day students.
All right, the motion has been made, and I have a second, we've, need to vote. I guess I should call your name, Peggy?
Yes, I'm.
Okay, Pat?
Yes.
Amanda?
No.
Amy?
No.
Max?
Yes.
Cindy?
No.
Uh huh, I'm a no, okay, that's four-three, fails, um, I'm going to throw this out here. I think that we ought to consider, beginning in February, having K four go to B with Wednesday in person.
Go to B or go to A?
Go to B.
Stay in B.
They're in B already.
Okay, we'll stay there.
Adding Wednesday.
In five through 12, we'll remain in B, and Wednesdays stay asynchronous, and then when we get to March, we'll work toward K four going to A, I will repeat my motion. In February, K four go to B, stay in B, with Wednesdays being in person, five through 12 remain in B, and Wednesdays stay asynchronous, in March, K four goes to A, with the potential in March of K four going to A, as odd as this is, I would look for a second to my motion.
Second.
Thank you, so we're now open to discussion.
I want to make sure I understand the.
Yeah, I don't understand the last part.
In, in March, K four goes, moves to A, or?
Has the potential.
Has the potential to move to A.
If we're not taking action on something, should it be part of the motion, Mr. Shatley? We have the potential for that today, next week, and the week after.
You do, I, I mean, I think I understand that the chair's point is, is simply to try to forecast, this is what we want to do, I would prefer if the motion was more exact, but it is meaningless, it is meaningless from the point of any, it having any real action, but it may have meaning from a communication standpoint, is my point, I guess.
Could, could we, could we, I don't, I feel like I'm probably doing this wrong, but could we, could we say that, could we say, rather than in February, we say February first, and then we say on the second part, March first, and we know that we have several meetings before March first, that could potentially change, but for now, we're going to put a date on that of March first.
Was, has your motion been seconded?
It has.
Okay.
So this would amend the motion?
I understand what you're saying, what, what.
Who's seconded the motion?
Okay, let me just say what I think I said, and then we'll talk, okay?
Okay.
I have down what you said.
All right, my, okay.
I'm just saying, we can't rephrase it now.
And did we have a second?
End it, though.
Yes, I have a second.
Who, who was the second, I didn't hear it.
Amanda.
Oh, it was you, okay.
I said I heard it, you're right next to me.
Oh, I'm Pat, I'm not going to play that game, okay, so what I.
No games, Madam Chair, I just was asking.
Okay, in February, we'll go to K four will stay in B with Wednesdays in person, five through 12 will remain in B, and Wednesdays would be asynchronous, asynchronous, are you okay with those dates?
Well, you're not saying any dates, I think that's the problem that he has, so do you mean February first when you say, starting in February?
Beginning February one.
Uh huh.
And then the March piece would come, in my mind, as we move through that February piece, our goal would be that in March, K four will go to A.
So, so since it's our goal, can we not just put that date on it and know that, like we were saying earlier, that, that can may have to get kicked if the metrics aren't good.
Sure, I don't have any problem with that, does my second, since you are the second, do you have a problem with that? I think our attorney has a problem.
Yes, when you said beginning in February and then beginning in March, did you mean February first and March first?
Yes.
Does anybody have any objection to that being the motion?
Thank you, Mr. Shatley, and now I have a second, do I have more discussion? March first, it's a Monday?
March first is a Monday.
March first is a Monday.
Sure.
Oh. Yeah.
Now, so her question, Madam Chair, is, in March, when you were talking about going to Plan A, did you say anything about Wednesday, I don't think she said anything about Wednesday in regard, I think, I think the assumption was Plan A included Wednesdays.
Yeah, and everybody's in in Plan A.
What she, when the chair did mention Wednesday particularly, was in February, K four will have the alternating Wednesdays, and five, 12, five, 13, whatever, will remain asynchronous on Wednesdays, is that correct?
Yes.
Madam Chair, question for Dr. Baldwin on Plan A, do, do parents and kids that choose, do, do they still have the choice, if we go to Plan A in elementary, to be virtual?
Yes.
I, I believe they would, that, that's been our, our pattern, I'm going to look back at Ms. Reed, and, and we've got thumbs up there, so the answer is yes.
Okay.
I, another question about your motion, so one of the classrooms I visited, this was at Fairview, was a combination fourth, fifth classroom, and so under your motion, Dr. Baldwin mentioned earlier that the staff would be in support of making an exception in those cases where there are four or five classes, so we're not splitting a class right down the middle, even though we would be splitting schools, individual classes, we would keep whole, so, so those fifth graders could come five days a week, is that in agreement with your motion?
I believe it is, isn't it?
I would think so, yes.
Okay.
I got, I got a head thumbs up back there.
Okay.
Yes.
Just want to make sure.
Thank you for the question, yes, for clarifying.
Madam Chair, may I throw something out as well, I think that oftentimes decisions like this are best made by the people closest to the problem, we as a board take data that is fed to us from the bottom up, and try to, try to judge it, or try to evaluate it, and put it into some sort of context, and we do this through the staff's efforts, the executive staff effort, and it seems like, as I think, here thinking about it, we are, again, trying to look at a crystal ball which we don't have, we don't know what the circumstance will be, but I tell you, I, I think I would be a whole lot less heartburn in looking forward, is to say on, to have the staff on that, our January 14th meeting, to come prepared, basically, what I feel like we should be doing, if we do anything along these lines tonight, I think we have to say, to simply take a position, it is the board's desire to get these schools reopened in a incremental basis, using these options here, stop, okay, we want it done as soon as possible, but we want it done safely, and we're going to depend upon the executive staff, through their work, pulling information out of the principals, instructors, et cetera, if there's any variation of this, we need to know about it on January 14th, because we'll have a clearer picture of it, and they could come back and do a modification to options or whatever, but I think, I think we're all here, what I'm hearing in the room is, we all want to try to get the kids back in school, but putting these arbitrary dates on something, I think that gives maybe a false sense of hope, but I think we're sending a clear message, Dr. Baldwin, that we want these kids back in school, we want to do it safely, we want to do it incrementally, that, and I just, I feel like we need to really pause for a second and give some thought or possible discussion to that.
But I, I'm, I'm a little worried about it being incremental, as long as we stay in Plan B, because to me, what, what that option is, is that you're talking about adding in a Wednesday, and again, we keep hearing loud and clear, we heard that at our work session, that the majority overwhelmingly, overwhelming majority, I believe, were the words that were used, principals have stated that, you know, we, their staff, and they, that they, they need that Wednesday to remain asynchronous in a Plan B, and so I think it's, I, I don't, I don't see the benefit to doing it increment, you know, incrementally, if we're hearing loud and clear that Plan B, five days a week, doesn't work, that they need that, that Wednesday.
I, I recognize that argument, however, we are already going down the incremental path, because we have accepted the previous motion to stay, basically increase an hour in K through 12, operate on current B schedule until the end of January, so we're already, that's, that's the first phase, that's an increment, so whatever we do next, that's still on the table.
Okay, because I, I thought we were still just.
I'm not taking that away from, from the discussion at all.
I thought the decision was made that we were going to go to the, adding the every other Wednesday, okay.
But that was voted down.
Not in this motion.
That was voted down.
Okay.
What it does, it puts the onus of this back into the hands of the executive staff, Superintendent Baldwin and his executive team, to bring the data to us on, you know, in our January meeting, because that's two weeks before the deadline on that four-week period, and I think we may have some clearer ideas, I just think putting number, putting dates and timelines and that, I think we're being premature.
That doesn't bother me at all, so I'm going to call the question.
Madam Chair, for clarity, based upon what Mr. Queen said, we, we are, the K through four, the first month you referenced, is Plan B with Wednesday being a school day, correct?
Correct.
Okay, because I thought you said no, or I thought somebody said no to that when he said it, okay.
Not at middle and high school, just K four.
K four.
Okay, other questions or comments?
Again, I'll just make the comment that I'll be voting no, because this motion involves a Wednesday school day for K through four.
Okey-dokey, so I'm calling the question and asking for the vote, Peggy?
Yes.
All right, Pat?
No.
Amanda?
Yes.
Amy?
No.
Max?
No.
Yes.
What?
Yes.
Yes, and me, I don't know if I'm going to vote for my motion or not, I'll vote yes, so that's four, yeses, three nos, the motion passed, now, I think Max's point has merit, and so, would you like to put your thoughts in a motion?
We'd be taking the dates away, you couldn't do that.
It would be difficult, it would be, I think it would be difficult for Mr. Queen to do, based on what I heard him say earlier, I mean, he's certainly welcome to try, without asking for reconsideration of previous motions that have been adopted.
And that would have to be by the person that made the motion, for reconsideration.
He would just.
Somebody would have, that voted for it, would have to move to reconsider it, but I'm certainly welcome for Mr. Queen to try, just, I know it will be difficult.
If, if, if that's the case, I would ask for reconsideration based upon, since the motion was on the table.
Was yes or no?
Since the motion was on the table, it had to be voted on, and it was, it carried, but I would ask that that be reconsidered.
Did you vote yes or no?
You voted no.
You voted no.
No, you can't do that, somebody that voted yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, somebody that voted yes has to ask for reconsideration. Boy, this is dead, Cindy.
And I just want to remind everybody that the, the only thing set in stone in the previous motion that was adopted is the addition of Wednesdays for K four, beginning on February the first, the March first, K four moving to Plan A was, I think, an aspirational date and not set in stone, so it, just keep that in mind, as I think you're thinking about.
Is that what you meant, Madam Chair, that's not what I heard.
He said the potential for.
Yes.
Plan A, am I wrong?
Beginning in March.
Mm-hmm.
Should I ask for reconsideration?
Oh, that's up to you all. If you want to, if you want to.
I'd like to just understand what, what the reconsideration would be on the basis of. So I, I wasn't clear what you were saying should change, Max.
I was just, basically, I'm asking that it be tabled until the 14th and when the staff would then, we'd have the data that we're hoping to have that we'd make a more intelligent and informed decision as far as the start date. We were talking about starting in February, starting in March.
The start date of, of Plan A?
What Madam Chair had laid out as her plan, starting February 1st and then you may have said tentatively in March for the, that second, that second phase or the second, here if you will. All I'm saying is that I don't, we may be able to do something totally different or have that on the table. And certainly, I guess we could always go back and revisit.
Right.
So if, and I think we're all in agreement, moving target and we can change things. So.
Well, I think that's why I would, just wanted to reiterate that the way the Madam Chair phrased her motion was the March 1 was the potential to move into A, which I took to mean aspirational.
Exactly.
That's, that's the goal. And I understand that, you know, putting a, a certain date on it was something that you weren't very supportive of, but it also, I think, gives you that same, maybe the same or sort of the same flexibility you were looking for in January.
I, I think that would be fine, Mr. Shatley. I think that aspirational or potential could also, those words could be applied to the February start of that phase as well. All I'm saying is we, you know, closer we get, the more, the clearer the picture would become.
So we could actually, instead of doing a motion, we could actually ask staff to come back to us on January 14th and give us some information as to where we are and what it looks like and how it's feeling out there. And opposed to doing a motion, we could just ask staff to do that. Would that feel good?
That would, that would be fine. And I, I think what you're, to, to your benefit, what we are doing at least is giving notice that tentatively, you know, we would like to be there by February 1st with your plan.
Well.
However, however, it would be dependent upon a variety of factors.
That, right now, you know, let, let's assume you did not have a meeting between now and February the 1st. You would be starting on February the 1st with alternating Wednesdays for K four. I mean, that is set in stone. You can always change that. You can change that in January. There's no problem with changing that in January. If you want to do it now, you have to do a motion to reconsider, but, because there'll be notice that it would be up for a change. So, but it would, it, that part of her motion was approved by this board and it is now set in action for that to begin. Just want to make sure everybody's clear.
But it can be reviewed in the, in the January board meeting.
As Dr. Baldwin has said, change in capital letters.
Okay, are we, are we good now? Okay, let's move along on this agenda. Thank you. You know, it is so wonderful, and these are not hollow words. It is so wonderful to have a group of people that care as much as they do about Buncombe County Schools and the students and what we put into place, that they are willing to do this hard work. And I, it is an honor to serve as your leader and it's an honor to serve Buncombe County Schools. I think that's true for all of us.
Madam Chair, could I add one just brief thought? And I should have done this during the vote and I apologize for not doing it, but I think the public has a right to know and I appreciate Ms. Churchill for voicing why she was voting against it. I wasn't, the reason I voted against is, is I think everybody understands, I just think any of these things we do, K through four ought to be K through five.
Sure.
It was not against bringing the K through four kids in on the Wednesday and then potentially in March doing that. It's, I just feel strongly that we, the fifth grader should have been included in that. That was the reason for my no vote. Thank you.
Sure. It is not an easy decision. Moving to the consent agenda, on the consent agenda, the minutes of November 5, regular meeting, personnel report, facsimile signature stamp for board chair, advisory council request to add a member, policies for second reading, policy 1320, 3560, Title I parent family engagement, policy 2120, code of ethics for school board members, policy 2121, board members conflict of interest, policy 2400, board policies, policy 3460, graduation requirements, policy 4202, 5029 and 7272, service animals, policy 4318, use of wireless communication devices, policy 6550, vandalism, policy 7250, 5026, smoking and tobacco products, policy 8341, limited claim settlement, policies to be rescinded, policy 3, 531, smoking and tobacco products, policy 590, damage claims and theft with theft and vandalism. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The, on the information agenda, you have the financial reports, notification of informal construction and repair, contracts for change orders, policies for first reading, policy 1510, 4200 and 7270, school safety, policy 1725, 40, policy 4035 and policy 7236, Title IX, sexual harassment, prohibited contact and reporting process, policy 1726, 4036, 7237, Title IX, sexual harassment, policy 3102, online instruction, policy 5020, visitors to schools, policy 5030, community use of facilities, policy 6305, safety and student transportation services, policy 7220 and 1750, grievance procedures for employees, policy 7240, drug-free and alcohol-free workplace, policy 7310 and policy 4040, staff-student relations, and policy 7900, resignation. I'll offer you that as information. Our next board meeting will be January the 14th. Work session and dinner begins at 4:00 and then the board meeting will be in this room at 5:30. I would, I, I also, I, on December the, oh shoot, 11th is the training for new board members. We have to, I'd like for the public to know that all, all new board members have to go through this ethics training and it will happen on December the 11th. I need a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair, first, can I just make one statement before we adjourn?
Please.
I just would like to go back to one of our public comments and, and when COVID wins is when it divides us. And we have done a really good job, as you pointed out, as a board, of working towards, working more together about how we can as a group collaboratively problem solve. And I feel honored to be a part of this process and I'm learning as I go. And it, I want to just, what our speaker said during public comment was it needs to be us against COVID. And this goes back to something that Amy said earlier. I just want to beg all of our families, our teachers, everybody, stay home for the holidays. That's how we do us against COVID. Thank you.
Thank you. I thought that was a profound statement also. So I would entertain, did I get a motion to adjourn? I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?[1771.41]